Where were you gonna go camping at?
Alrighty, we will open the city council. And is there any public comments at this point in time? Public comments, and then we'll close it. Alright, yeah, thank you all for coming. I like to see a big crowd. We will start this thing off here. We had closed session and there was no reportable action taken, so everybody knows. Now, we will go on to... Number seven, it's like skip, 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 skip. Alright, this is the time for a special presentation. We have a special presentation by Cal, and I think he's getting it ready up there, so we'll give him a second. In the meantime, make sure everybody, please, silences their cell phones, so we don't get any interruptions during this, please. Cal, are you ready, sir? Well, we'll get you on board if you're ready. Yes, thank you, Cal. Please introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Cal Conklin. I live outside of the Waireca city limits. But over the last three quarters of the year, I've been trying to help our people that don't have homes. And because of helping them, I've gotten a feeling a little bit more for where they're coming from, what they need, and I still, my wife and I still want to try and help them. And so I developed a relatively short PowerPoint. I think it's like only 11 slides. And it's relative to this ordinance. The ordinance was passed, I think, temporarily in the last meeting, and this one's gonna try and make it more permanent. And because it's more permanent, I had to look a little more in depth on it. The ordinance, the last words on the bottom there says, I need to show less negative and more positive. And what I found in going through this
Steve.
Join the meeting.
Is that all of the ordinance is words. There's no pictures of where people can or can't be. So you have to interpret the words. And I've met several times with Jason to try and figure out what it means. The closest I could come to is both of us have something to look at. And the something to look at for me generally would naps, naps where people are. Go to the next slide, please. Over the three quarters of the year, back around May, if you look at, I got my pointer here, which is my level laser. Let's see if I can make it work. It doesn't work too well. Here is the north end of town. And you can see some yellow dots. Here's some more yellow dots. Come on, laser pointer. There we go. I gotta find it again. I don't have a... I haven't used it. I haven't used it in a while. Anyways, all the yellow dots are where we found people that didn't have homes. Most of them were in tents. Or maybe not even tents. And they, they end up with needing some help. It's usually when we were passing out some lunches or some other things and visiting with them. And what we found out was the north end of town, which is a Deer Creek campground area. There were about five tents, around eight people. This ordinance, as it was written temporarily, had gotten rid of the people there. They're in evidently some no-no land, so they're not there anymore. And then the ones along the creek between there and the south exit are more in and out, more hidden. So what, what it came down to is, I tried focus on where most of the people are that are, I call them unhoused, but here the group uses homeless. Well, they are housed. They have a tent. You know, to us, a house generally has four walls and a door and some windows and a solid roof. To them, they have a home also. See if I can get this working again. Oh, well. Anyways, next slide, please. I've blown up that south area. You can see a large dot, a yellow dot near the top in the center part. That's the, the big area that has the most tents is if you're down that south exit and you look up the hill, or you're driven by some of it, you'll find probably about 20 to 25 tents. And as many people, if you have a couple of, a couple of people in there in each tent. And then along the road from the Black Bear Restaurant up to the COS, there are quite a few people that are parked there. So they're not tenters, but they're people without a home. And I just learned tonight that when it gets dark and all the people from Behavioral Health is no longer parked out on the roadway, there are quite a few that use that roadway for overnight. The reason that I've got a circle on there is I asked them, you know, why are you up here? And almost everybody has to have at least one thing, a place to stay. A second thing is something to eat. And a third thing maybe is to buy a few things. So that circle there is, I wrote on the bottom, is a seven to 11 minute walking to go down to shopping and food and necessities. The ones that are along the roadway have less to walk to get there. Then if you look farther, where it says Green Horn Park in the upper right-hand corner, there's some dots up there. And all of those yellow dots, those three yellow dots, the big one, are all on city property. So that's why it's important for this ordinance, because it's relative to city property generally. The one right below Green Horn is the toilet. They like parking there because they have facilities. And the two below it are, there's a big tree that people like to park by on the left. The right one is, there's several people there now, just outside the park entrance, for those of you that have been to the park. People that are in the park don't seem to have as much of a problem with them being outside. But the actual park boundary is where those dots are. It's not at the gate. It's below it. The ones that are down towards where the bottom left is the GW, that's Goodwill, Rayleigh's. Oh, I like that pointer, thank you. And Walmart seems to be the biggest places that they go for what they need because they don't have a lot of money. But they need to go daily to get food. They don't have refrigerators. They shouldn't have fires, but they sometimes do. Anyways, the walking distance is more reasonable for this group. And the only other thing that they do regular is below the Green Horn Park entrance, where I've got, I think it's Recycle. That's one of the ways that they try to get money is they find cans wherever they can, so they spend time there too. So if you look at that, that circle of where the people are and where they go, it's not an awfully big circle. It's not generally in the main part of town. Next slide, please. Now, when I was out there in May, I mapped some of the tent sites. And if you look at the circles, this is a blow up across from Behavioral Health on the hillside. The commonality of that, the circles are, almost all of them are by trees. And I talked to him before about why are you here? Why not go down on the flats by the fairgrounds or someplace else? Those trees make a big difference, both in the winter time and as well during the spring when the winds are up, they can tie down. And in the summertime, they've got shade. So to them, this is, that's why they congregated there. The photo before the yellow was on there is a 2017 from Google Earth. There was nobody out there five years ago. So all of this has been within about the last five years, of which one of the persons that came in with, Mike, has been there that long. And a few others have been there around that long. So they, they know about people going in and out and changing sites. And the rules, they, we've got a good officer Willow that comes up and visits with them on what might be needed, suggestions, and once in a while a ticket on things. But the, the city has been able to work with the people in this particular area. Next slide, please. Now, I did at the same time, a survey of finding out what people need. And as you can see, they're, they're kind of in order. The first thing they needed the most was water for lots of things, drinking, washing, showers, clothing, toilets, fire safety. Anyways, water was the top for everybody. And then trash pickup, fire, police, in kind of that order. The fire number three has come up to almost the top now because of the season we're in. This was back in May. So we're trying to work on a way to clean that up to make it more fire safe, both for them, because they want it, and for the city. The city doesn't want a fire either. We don't want, what I hear the people that are managing the city, we don't want a fire like happened in Talent Phoenix or up here at Horn Brook, depending on the wind direction. But that's, that's become more important. And then at the bottom are some more additional things. Next slide, please. So to try and figure out what this ordinance meant, I asked the city to furnish the area around Rayleigh's Walmart of who owns what. Because I've been told that the people that are homeless, the state has a rule that the city has to have a place for them to go. They can't put them all in jail. And you can't say you gotta leave the city, so you have to have a place. So since they're down here, I tended to focus on that. Next slide, please. Out of the 99 parcels that I was given, I narrowed it down to 17 that looked like it was either a place that's big enough to camp on with your tent or your car. And as you can see, 17 out of that 99 is not an awful lot. Look at the ownership on it. They're generally the county or the city. Except for CDF, which is also public. I highlighted the blue ones, which are the big acres, the Green Horn Park and the fairgrounds, which probably most people in Waireca would not necessarily want them in the park or on the fairgrounds. So I reduced the acreage down on that and ended up with only like 48, 48 acres that are where these homeless people could be, whether they're in their vehicle or their tent or side of the road. Next slide, please. I took my Google Earth map, mapped where those sites are, and they're all by numbers. And if you look at it, there's a big concentration up in the upper right-hand side that are yellow. Those are generally city properties. And the Big Ten area, most of it is in number 69, 68, and 66, right next to COS. Most of the parking is in number 70 parcel, which is the road from the Black Bear up to COS. That tends to be where most were. And then, when I was looking at that, oh, there's some more parcels that they actually could be on, the homeless people, that are city lands that are yellow. And if you look in the middle on the top, there's a roadway there that's aimed at, I think it's Walmart. And another one over, I believe it's west side, that's on the left-hand side. The right away there is big enough that they could be off the road and still park and drive to get their supplies, their food and so forth. The green ones, the four green ones are county lands or CDF. That's something the city has a little bit less control of than city lands. And then there was a big parcel that's yellow down in the bottom central, number seven. Nobody realized that that might be available also. If you look at it from across the road where CDF is, there are a few houses, I think there's two houses and some trailers across the way on the road, just near the top of the seven. There's a steep part of it at the very bottom, but there's about four acres, four acres in the bottom that's relatively flat, that people could be on and still close to that circle to be able to walk to get their food. They have to do that every day. So in, in looking at it, there are quite a few options. And then I, I decided, well, this is telling you folks where we know people are and where they could be that has some city control. Next slide, please. Now, I'm getting into the ordinance. The ordinance as worded says schools and parks, 250-foot exclusion. So the blue area that's Green Horn Park and the blue area by COS, 250 foot all the way around them, because it's a school, rules out the three yellow dots that are by the Green Horn entrance, that area. Hello. And it, it rules out almost all of the parking along COS. And then the right-hand half of the big yellow dot, that part of the city lands is out because it's within 250 foot of the Green Horn Park boundary. Left the COS, a chunk is out because that's within 250 foot. That's why this is important, the 250 foot. Next slide, please.
And Cal, I think we're getting close to kind of the time.
One more.
Okay.
Yeah, one more, no, two more slides. The next slide, please. Okay, now I added on the infrastructure, and this is a wrong slide. I've got a new one, like 250 foot. All of these green areas that are on the right-hand side will be narrow, only 50 foot wide. Because they are, according to the, what Jason showed me a couple of minutes ago, 50 foot. When you look at the three dots that are in the middle, the road going up to the park entrance across the COS and down Moonlit Oaks to Black Bear is a 250 foot because it does have bus service for students. I just found that today. I had I had to go out and actually visit the people and find the bus people. So that would be a 250 foot. That rules out a lot of what's going on. Next slide. I think it's the last slide. Okay, what I did was I lifted what the ordinance says here in the very top, and I underlined some of the important parts. Well, I tried to. The 250 foot is the important one. The 50-foot critical infrastructure. My best guess, if it says critical infrastructure, is that all roads in Waireca are critical infrastructure. The way, the way, you know, because they're city roads. That means every road within 50 foot, nobody can be on or park on. And then the Waireca Creek Greenway, I think that is also infrastructure. That means that whole creek all the way through Waireca, Clear to Deer Creek is off limits. So what it does is, is it shows that where people are now, probably are not going to interfere real big with this ordinance, except the corner next to COS in the roadway. And what I would like, the last sentence on there says, the ordinance seems to be very negative. And if we had something more positive that we could pass on to these people, this is where we would like you to be, where it's okay to be. That's a positive thing, because they're people too. And in working with Jason, I think long-term, with what the city's been planning, it'll be taken care of. But right now, we've got short-term. And these people need to know that it's okay for them to be where they are, park where they are. If the ordinance can be changed to reflect that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Cal. That was a lot of good information. We appreciate that. And I think this will, there'll definitely be some further discussions about this. And we, thank you for bringing that forward. And I know the council appreciates that information. There's a lot, like you said, there's a lot to this ordinance that we need to look at. So thank, thank you, Cal. Appreciate it.
Hopefully, there'll be a long enough term discussion before it's voted as being permanent. And something will come out of that. It'll be a change.
Thank you. Thank you, Cal. Thank you. Alright, let's move to the next one, which is public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited to city council meetings. Time is reserved at each regular meeting for those in the audience who wish to address the county, city council. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, and disruptive remarks. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions. And the president, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of this meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed or posted on the agenda. So if there's any public comment this time that's not on this council, on our agenda right now, this is a time for that. I also say not on the agenda, because we'll have time on anything on the agenda to speak your mind. Yes, please.
I think you can hear me with masks on.
Yes. If you could, you know, state your name and if you're resident Waireca and where you live, if you feel comfortable.
No, my name is Molly Armack. I live in Waireca. I've been a citizen of this county for 40 years. And I appreciate this opportunity to bring what feels like a really important issue for our city forward. I've written it up because it's rather emotional for me, but... So I'd like to bring to your attention an event that I witnessed during the week leading up to the Fourth of July. I had out-of-town relatives visiting me. And it was either before or after dinner, when seven white teenage boys walked down the middle of the street in front of my home, chanting loudly and in unison, and I'm gonna say it, fuck Joe Biden. Considering the current political climate in our nation, and that there is a faction of election deniers who are white nationalists, the scene taking place in my neighborhood made me think of Nazi youth during the Hitler regime. It was shocking to me, and it was chilling. A black man happened to be walking down an adjacent street toward our intersection at that same moment. And I can only imagine what he might have been feeling. I also wondered about my visiting niece. She's half-Chinese. She looks 100% Chinese. Did she feel safe or welcome in my community? I was ashamed that my family would have to witness this behavior while visiting my town over the Fourth of July. And I'm deeply embarrassed to admit, I was intimidated enough by these seven boys that I didn't walk out my door and stand in front of their parade and question the behavior. During this past spring, it seemed to me that every time I walked a block in any direction from my home, and I do not live far from city hall, there was a new sign in someone's yard or window that would display the exact same sentiment that these boys were chanting out loud. And with each new banner or flag, a knot would form in my gut. What recently happened on my street proved to me what I feared. Slandrous rage in our town is gaining a dangerous momentum. So my question is, how do we as a community respond to this type of aggression that's in our midst? And when do we take seriously the brainwashing of children in the bidding of evil? All I can suggest is to draw up a proclamation which explains and condemns hate propaganda and describes just how it's been proliferated in our community. It should warn of the dangerous effect this tactic has on young minds. And this proclamation should be signed by all members who hold an elected position in the city, our supervisor, and by all law enforcement officers. It should be published in the newspaper and distributed widely to every venue possible to reach the most citizens. We're talking about envisioning the future of Waireca and plan for a city we hope to have in 20 or 25 years? I really shudder to think that that was a sneak preview of it marching down my street. And that is my comments today.
Thank you very much for that. Yes, thank, thank you for that. And I think that's, make some very good points. Thank you.
Is that on? Can you hear me?
I think so.
Okay. Sorry. I wanted to talk about Green Horn Park. On Facebook, there was this thing about someone wanted to get a flat-bottom boat and dredge it all out and whatnot. And they kept saying that, you know, it's not the park host's job. It is the park host's job to tell these people, you know, they should know the rules. They should know, you know, we are employing them. And they should immediately tell our guests at the park that they're not allowed to dredge out the park because it's against the law. And they should tell them the law. And another thing that's really starting to anger me is that we do employ these park hosts. And they should not be closing the gates. There should be set hours. This is summertime. They should, you know, maybe even go with a loudspeaker, hey, people, move your cars, you're gonna get locked in. Instead, our police officers are having to run over there and open the gates. This is not okay. These are employees. Why are we paying them if they're not gonna do their job? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there any other public comments at this point in time?
I just wanted to, I just had a couple of questions for...
Would you like to state your...
I'm Melissa Browning. I'm... I'm Melissa Browning. I'm here with Mike, part of the home, two of the homeless people that you guys have. You know, welcomed here. Anyway, I had a couple of questions from. The people that were like on the side of the hill and stuff. When their stuff is taken, where should they go to get it? Or is it just thrown away? Is it, is there a place that they can go to get it? Or do you guys know about any of that?
Yeah, and we, the public, I'm sorry, the public comment time, it's kind of strange, but it's not a question.
Okay, well, okay, then on behalf of that. What was it, Mike? Do you have, okay, the right public comment. The my, my big thing is I can't think of anything else except for this. It's been in my head since way before everyone came here. The needle exchange, the needle exchange. Okay, that you can walk down the street and you can find those things laying on the side like candy canes at Christmas time, you know? And it's, it's, I keep hearing about, you know, the people that are the ones that are using them who are throwing them there and you know how? How, I mean, they're being unresponsible, which I do agree with that. But I think that my, this is just my opinion that the city or whoever is the ones giving these to these people. Are being irresponsible by not, by just handing them out like candy. I, I think if you turn one in, you can get one back, you know? You don't turn none in, you don't get none that day. You probably receive any of the other services that they give you. But I just wanted to make a comment that that's, I know how it's supposed to be, but it's not the way it is. They keep just handing them out like candy and wondering why they're finding them out because there's no control. There's no need to keep the ones that they have, you know, to get new ones. So they're just, you know, it's like, so I kind of feel that, you know, on that side, that's gotta, you kind of gotta stop. You know, it's, I mean, that's just ridiculous and like, you know, like it doesn't do any good on our end to get on to the people who are doing it. If, you know, they're just going to be supplied it. Yeah, like I know, I know that there's supposed to be a rule in place, but that's not how it is. I was just trying to put that out there that, you know, it's kind of being supplied, you know, freely and there's no control of that. I think the other thing is, is, you know, I agree with, there's got to be a little bit more positive coming, you know, like there's been like. So much, you know, no, 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 and in, you know, everything that, you know, you guys have talked about and everything that like really. We don't like, you know, I said last time, we don't know what the yeses are, you know, we don't know, we just kind of feel like we're being like, you know, just no. You know, we got like our grandmother pointing at with a finger being like, no, and we just don't understand why we can't have that cookie in the jar like, you know? So, yeah, if we could have like a little bit more clarity on the yeses, you know, and, you know, let us know what. We could possibly do on that end, that would be culture and. Yeah, just more like the things that we are allowed to do because we really, we really know all the things that we can't, we can't do. But the things that we are allowed to do and, you know, stuff like that, that would be a little bit more helpful towards us to. Because I think what I think what you guys are doing is great, like once we, you guys get like, you know, the services and stuff in the town and stuff. I think like, you know, it won't take too much for everybody to follow along, like, you know, it seems like everybody's kind of trying with, you know, kind of like how they've been grouping together and going where you guys stay and stuff. It seems like everybody's trying. It's just there's, once you get to be homeless, it gets to be a mindset. And once you get in that mindset, you, you honestly forget about how to work in society. How to do day to day things that you guys don't even really have to put any thought to, but for somebody who's homeless and hasn't done that in four or five years. It's, it's just, you know, you have to be retrained yourself and I think that's the biggest thing is getting the facilities to get the mental help to, you know. Build them back up to get back into society to learn how to function normally. And yeah, just thank you guys for trying to do that. And I, from what I see, like, I don't see anybody really having a problem. You know, going through all that, it's just getting the services here and finding out what kind of services they need, but really it's a mindset. And to get people out of that, it's kind of a little bit difficult, but it seems like everybody's kind of trying to jump through the hoops to do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment this point in time?
Homeless, I've been here for five years. I'd like to state that. You know, we get. We get a lot of negative publicity, you know, and you, you know, for, and that's just, you know, there's a lot of negative things that go on in the homeless camps. You know, being homeless, living in these camps, there's ways that we have to do things, okay? Let's say the trash, okay? When somebody moves into an area with the town and they leave, okay? Ninety-seven times they leave a lot of trash, okay? Now, we can't just go in right away behind them and pick that up, okay? We have to kind of give them grace period, you know, so they can come and get their things and, and I don't know why that is, but that's the way it is. And most of us are sick of the trash as well as you guys are. And we got the dumpster up there and it's slowly catching on, you know, we're trying to promote to pick that trash up. And we do have a lot of, you know, issues up there as well as drug addiction and all things. Nothing I want to say was, you know, we have a fire up there in that small room. The homeless people jumped out right away when the fire started and we got it out. You know, party bombing approached and by the time we got there, we had it under control. And since then, the churches and other organizations have given us fireworks and choosings to place them. So it's nice to get a little positive white once in a while, you know, if we are turning.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for your involvement too with the COC and everything too. We appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any other public comments at this time? Oh, we got one online? Okay. No, oh, none. Oops, I put my hearing aid on. All right, we'll move on to number ten consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, non-controversial and will be enacted under one motion unless a member of the. Council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval of minutes of the special meeting held on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. B, approval of minutes of regular meeting held on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. C, resolution approving the destruction of certain city records identified by the finance director. D, approval of one year extension of contract position of assistant city manager to June, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And an appropriation of this for this position. E, continuation of urgency ordinance number eight sixty-four fireworks. F, continuation urgency resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one remote public meetings. G, wave awful text readings of all ordinance on the agenda. Orders shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Is there any comments concerned? But I lost that. It's two of Mr.'s, you were going to do a motion, I assume.
Actually, I had a correction on minutes. There were two names misspelled. I just wanted to correct if I could.
Okay, so I guess which on, on the minutes of which one?
The minutes of the last.
So that June twenty-first, so you want to, do you want clarification of that?
Yes, please. Jan Osborne, it mentioned her as a speaker of the comment and it was spelled J E N, it's J A N.
Okay.
And then they had Cory Hayden and the spelling is not what I think it is. K O R Y, not K O R E Y.
Oh. Good catch. Thank you. Okay, there's, is there any comments from the council, the correction of the spelling of that? Okay, is there any, is there any concerns or remarks from the audience at this point in time or from the members of the public? Bring it back to the council. What is the wishes of the council? Yes, Mr. McCoy.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent. Consent agenda as listed with the corrections of J A N for J E N and K O, K O R Y for K O R E Y.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion.
Debbie Baird, one second.
Motion in a second. Joan Smith Freeman. Paul McQuaid.
Hi.
Cory Middleton.
Hi.
Debbie Baird.
And I, Duane Clay.
This is Carrie. Thank you. Now we will move on to number eleven.
And mine is E Y.
Yeah, you're. With a C though. All right, we'll move on to the number eleven. This is a public hearing. It will open it up for a public hearing part of this. I think Mr. Ledbetter will explain some of this first and we'll open up for the public for a public hearing part of this.
Yeah, so this is the introduction of an ordinance establishing a general sales tax of one half cent, one percent. Within the city. In consideration of a resolution calling for an election on the ordinance and other actions necessary to place the ordinance on the November eighth, twenty twenty-two general election ballot. So before the council for a first reading as a resolution ordinance, which would place on the November eighth, twenty twenty-two general election ballot, a measure. Asking the voters to approve adding chapter three point five zero as an ordinance to the Waireka municipal code. The city's voters would be asked the following question. So I'm just going to read this for clarification because I think we may have some questions and comments on this. So, sales tax to generally fund essential city services. To maintain Waireka's long-term financial stability through the adoption. Of a supplemental sales tax that would generally fund essential city services. Such as necessary fire, paramedic facilities, public safety response time. The operation and maintenance of the Waireka Aquatic Center. The native park project located on Foothill Drive. Clean and safe city parks and other essential city services. Shall the city of Waireka ordinance be adopted establishing a one half cent sales tax. Transaction and use tax for general governmental use on an ongoing basis. Until ended by the voters, providing about one million dollars annually with independent audits and all funds locally controlled. So I'm going to kind of introduce that today, and I know that we'll have a lot of commentary on this item tonight. And if there's any other needed information from me tonight, I will be happy to share it. But I also, before we break into this, because it does coincide with. The sales tax, I just wanted to follow up with a status report by the California Department of Parks and Recreation. I had an inquiry from someone to read some of the items that are the required project deliverables. So I know in the past via verbal telephone conversation with the Parks Department. They had told us some items verbally, but have now sent through legal documentation that I am required to sign. With required project deliverables, meaning these items have to be. In the pool project once complete, and I just wanted to point out a retractable roof is listed in here. We obviously have the artwork and tiles that would be depicting the native theme. Solar panels that would serve the building. ADA pathways allowing easy access throughout the entirety of the park, the meditation area, the sculpture garden. ADA accessible playground equipment are some of the highlights and then. Security cameras around the park for safety, see-through fencing around the entire park, meditation, garden maze. And solar panels will provide energy for the pool and park and solar tubes will be used to heat the pool. So just wanted to reiterate that these aren't asks, these are required deliverables of that project. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. I appreciate that. At this point in time, actually, I'm going to open up to the public, do the public comments portion of this.
I just have a clarification. It isn't all the way through here. It says one half cent and it's actually one half percent, which is a nickel on a dollar, right?
That's right.
On a dollar or fifty cents on a hundred dollars, but it's one half percent. Now, in part of these documents, it states that, but in part of it, it doesn't. So I would like for it to be, well, the same all the way through, one half percent.
Absolutely, yes. Is that, is that reasonable with the rest of the council that we do acknowledge that and understand that?
Same verbiage.
Yeah, and if we can clarify with our city attorney to the language on, because this is what the ballot would look like.
Is there a reason for a reading tonight if we don't have a document that's, that's, we're not a document, it's the complete opposite, so.
That's where I think we'd like, yeah, we could make maybe an adjustment and have John kind of chime in.
As long as the council is okay with that, I think it's proper that we make the adjustment.
Now, is the adjustment in the resolution or is the adjustment in the ordinance?
It's, it's in neither. Actually, I think that the ordinance and resolution read correctly. I think it's just in the city council agenda memo. At this moment, at this moment, but at my, looking at the ordinance and the resolution, there is a, there's a reference to. Clarifying what half a percent is being half a cent of a dollar, so.
Question on the.
Yes, please.
Deliverables. In the state information there, were they still asking for. Free open swim and what were those hours and are they? Should have written it down. Oh, timeframe that it's open. Is it year round, ten months?
No, they're not listed in this, I, this paperwork that I have to send back. It's not, those items are not listed to my knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah, it's more of a project deliverables of like secured actual items, so the covered roof and stuff. Instead of the theoretical items over hours of operation are, I don't see them listed in here.
Okay, thank you.
So the clarification, go back, go back to the agenda. The clarification is imposing not a one half cent, but a one half percent. Because that's what's listed in the, one half percent is listed in parentheses. And in, in the bold type, and then when you get down into the, the narration, it says general tax of one half cent. And that should read one half percent because it already has one half percent in parentheses. We want to make that consistent.
I think that's what we're saying, yes. Yeah, no, I, we need to be on the same sheet of music, I'm sure. Is that we're okay then or can we? I'm going to open this up to the public.
And I just wanted to let the mayor and the council know that at the end, I'd like to read, I think I have four letters from members of the public that can't be here today, so.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate after the, the audience does that, then you can state what they've said because that would be still part of the comment.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, batter up.
Buzz Mccluskey, I live in Waireka up on Northridge. I would just really like to thank the city council for continuing on with this. One thing that Joan said was a nickel on a dollar, but I believe it's a nickel on ten dollars.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so because we've had a lot of discussion about this, but I am so excited about this. I've had lots of conversations. I'm having my fortieth class reunion in a couple of weeks and my class knows that I've been involved with the pool for, since time began, it feels like, but. They, they're all asking, what's going on? What's going on? What's going on? And they are super excited about what we are proposing and what's going to happen. It's going to be a fabulous facility, you know, sure, everybody is tugging at the heartstrings that it's not right where it used to be. But when I explained to them, you know, how the grant ran and all that kind of stuff and that, no, we just couldn't have it there. They, they understand that and they're super excited about a new facility and what it's going to look like and. The opportunity for kids to get back into that swimming world. Unfortunately, you know, on the news, there's been a lot of. Mentions of drownings. Now's the time, you know, people are, it's hot, people are getting in the water and. That opportunity to learn to swim and to swim in a safe environment is going to be huge for our community. And, you know, I know they can go to Montague and they can go to Aetna, but those that don't have transportation to those places or didn't get in on the. The stage thing that we have going back and forth with Montague. You know, they don't have that opportunity and, you know, kids that, that don't have parents that can drive them over there or whatever it is. It's a short walk. It's a bus ride right up there to that new facility and it will be a safe environment for those people to learn to swim in. You know, not just kids, but adults, you know, I taught adult swim lessons forever. And it's amazing the amount of adults who don't know how to swim. And one lady in particular comes to mind, she said, I can't help my child, I can't help my child if they don't know how to swim. You know what, I don't know how to swim, how am I going to help my child? So that was her big motivation to learn how to swim, and it was very rewarding for me to help her out, and just the other kid, you know, I'm half this community, I think I've taught how to swim, but it's going to be great, and I'm just super excited, and I also want to thank Robin for all of her work that she's been doing and everybody else on the little committee that we have, and it's, it's going to be great, and thank you guys for continuing with this.
Thank, thank you, Buzzzy.
Hi, Robin Richards from Wairika. Certainly, I can't up what Buzzzy said, because she's had so much experience, so many years, and but I just have to say that I'm really excited about this project as well. I think that our community needs to have some of these kinds of community services. So what I really appreciate about it is that you are looking at the fiscal aspects of it and saying, okay, we need to be able to pay for the maintenance and operation, because Ringy Pool, as you guys know, we had a lot of problems with deferred maintenance. So having the ability to have our voters support it, I think is really critical, and I really appreciate having it on the November election, you know, the November ballot, because I do think that's a time when we can promote it, we can talk to people about community, and we're going to have a place for our kids to go, I think that's the piece that's, that's, we, I was just talking with a friend of mine today, we just don't have any place, there isn't a gathering location for kids, so unfortunately, they might be walking the streets like Molly talked about, which is, is pretty sad. So I, I just want to thank you, and I really support what you're doing, and yeah, hope we can just get it passed in November, we'll work hard to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
Lorenzo Love, I live on Fourth Street. Does anybody real, realistically think at these required deliverables are going to be finished with this budget with eight and a half million dollars? You can shortchange it, half-ass all this stuff, and you're still not going to have enough money left for the actual pool. You're going to wind up with a plastic waiting pool and a lawn sprinkler. There isn't enough money to do this. If you try to do this, the city is going, it's going to go over budget by millions. Millions, the city doesn't have can of Ford. This will break the city. Now, this tax measure itself, essential services, how is a pool an essential service? It's not. And there's no guarantee that one cent of this tax money is actually going to go for the pool or for any other essential service, it's all going to go to the general fund. And the next city council may have some other bright new shiny project they want to do, and they'll use the money for that. Or the money we've taken for actual essential items, like police. We need to hire more police. City employee salaries are going up, we need to pay for that. There's not going to be any money left for the pool. So why are you trying to fool everybody by thinking that we can afford this? We can't. It's not affordable, it's inflationary, it's bad for the public, it's bad for the city. Just say no to this, it's boondoggle.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
I'm Cal Conklin, talking again, I live outside of Wairika, but our daughter went to the Wairika High School and she used the pool. I don't have comments about the money, which seems to be a big issue. The issue I see is where the old pool is located is in the center of town. A lot of the kids walked to that, or they were in the high school or school, they could walk to it. The current proposed location is more on the outside of the Wairika area where most of the people are, so I think you need to rethink a little bit of where you're doing the pool, if you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal.
How do you put the button? The gallon? Thank you.
It's all fancy now.
This is really nice. Louise Pleato, I live in Wairika, I've been here since two thousand and seven, I'm an implant from the Bay Area, my brother talked me into moving here and told me what a wonderful city it was, and when I first moved here, we had the Blue Goose, we had, shoot, we had a wonderful shoe store, we had a movie theater, we had all kinds of things, and things have slowly disappeared. And so I understand and I hear what people are saying about having something wonderful to kit, for the kids. I did read the grant, and Robin, you did an excellent job on the grant, I thought it was very interesting, but I also read the PowerPoint presentation, and thank you, Rhonda, for sending this to me, I read it twice, and so I know during this public comment, is there, can you answer questions?
You can ask questions now, we, 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 I'm going to address it at the end whenever a public comment's done, though, thank you.
Okay, well, the question I have is, I, when I looked at the grant, it didn't say anything about how long the pool should be open, the hours, or how many months it should be open. It said that, I think I remember it saying that you couldn't charge for it, so I'm just wondering how you're going to charge for swim lessons, because in this PowerPoint presentation, you're predicting fifty thousand dollars worth of money coming in for teaching swimming lessons. And so if this is in a depressed area, because that was part of the grant, it had to be in an area that's not affluent, and they thought where the present pool is, is affluent. So I guess if you live in a single-family home, you're affluent, did you all know that? And if you live in apartment buildings, you're not, and so that, that was what I got from the PowerPoint presentation and from, from the grant. But what are you going to do about children who can't afford swim lessons? And one of the reasons for having the swimming pool or any swimming pool is to have children safe in the water. So if you've got people who are living in apartments and, and according to the grant, they're not affluent, so they can't afford swim lessons, then how will this help these folks, are you going to accommodate them in any way? I wanted to know about that also, I didn't see in the PowerPoint presentation, and maybe I missed it, about what is the money or what would be the cost to demo the, the current pool that you have? Are you just going to leave the hole in the ground, are you going to demo, is that part of the cost for the new pool? Because that wasn't, that wasn't in there. The other question I had was, is my understanding, by the way, I have not been to any of the meetings, so I'm not as knowledgeable as probably most of the people in the audience, but we did, I do run the Patriots group here in town. We did have Joan Smith one night at our meeting who gave a presentation, and we had a councilwoman, Barrett, at our meeting who gave her presentation, so I got to hear both opinions from both sides, and each of the ladies were representing themselves. One of my questions is that Joan brought up was the fact that the firehouse, the present firehouse, it's not high enough for the, for the, for the engines to get through, so they have to let some of the air out of the tires to get them in, and that to have, to get, this, this is what I remember her saying, so if I didn't, if it's not correct, please correct. Well, they've lowered, they've released some air so they can get underneath. And, and my question is, it seems to me like we probably are going to be needing a new firehouse somewhere down the line, because what I learned from Deborah Barrett was that the city has to order specialized fire trucks, we have to have them custom-made, which then costs the city more money. So those are just some of the questions that I have also, I understand that we have to put out the eight point five million dollars from the city, and then the grant reimburses the city, I don't know if that's correct, but if that's correct, where are we getting the eight and a half million dollars from? Is it an emergency fund, do we have a slush fund hidden somewhere, where does that come from? I did want to mention something else too, and, and this is kind of, it's going to sound like it's off-subject, but it's a concern I have. I don't know if you're aware of two bills that were passed in two thousand and eighteen by our legislators, and it was, it's AB sixteen sixty-eight and SB six oh six, and what that bill was, and it was passed May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, which is now the law, that says that we have to look at our water consumption here in California, and what, and what that bill actually says is that, starting in June of two thousand and twenty-two, that each household per person is allowed fifty gallons of water. So my question is, when it was mentioned about the pool and about possible contamination, if the pool becomes contaminated, the five hundred thousand gallons, which is in the Olympic-sized pool, will have to be drained, the pool will have to be cleaned, the equipment will have to be cleaned, will, will the city of Wairika get dinged for that? Because if you, let's just say there's seven thousand people living in Wairika, if you, if you take seven thousand and divide it into five hundred thousand gallons of water, that's seventy-four gallons per person. Will we get dinged for that when we have to empty out a pool, and I'm sure that's going to happen, because we're going to have people in there that are not conscientious, and they're going to do something, especially if you have a children's waiting pool, are there going to be toddlers that are not, you know, that not potty-trained, et cetera? Those are my comments, I would urge the council to vote no on it tonight, to not put it on the ballot. I think it's a bad idea, and I'm afraid it's going to bankrupt our city, thank you.
Thank you, Louise, appreciate that.
Greetings, my name is Rob Bichego, I live in Wairika. I sat where you are, one point in time. So I'm here to talk about the resolution, sales tax to generally fund essential city services. I really want a pool in Wairika, okay, that's the very first thing I want to tell you. But the way this resolution is being presented is incorrect. The the drive is the, is the pool park rent, okay, that's predominantly why you have the sales tax proposal. Unfortunately, the language in the proposed resolution includes the fire department. Was the fire department even consulted before that language went in the resolution? I'd probably say no. Was there a plan for how to spend any of that money for the fire department before it entered the resolution? Probably say no. But the way the resolution is worded, it's the very first thing, so you're tugging at the heartstrings of the citizens of Wairika, thinking that this is for the fire department, paramedic facilities, public safety response time, that's not what this is. This is a sales tax for the pool and the park. If you had just said that alone, that would have been really helpful. But the fact that it doesn't say that, and that it goes on to say, Wairika is preparing to build, this is in the, the whereas is, Wairika is preparing to build a new fire station to better protect the community from the fire dangers that surrounding communities have experienced. Really? In this? Let's take a look at this. So optimistically, you're going to raise a million in a year, optimistically. Fortunately, you guys have, and I trust all of you, okay, number one, the problem is that you're not here forever, and I'm going to tell you why that's important in a second. So you said that, look, we're facing a three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollar deficit. This is a sales tax that's going to go into the general fund. So let's do the math. One million minus three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars, now you're left with six hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Let's keep doing the math. According to the grant application, they say that the yearly park and native, the pool and native park maintenance will be three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. They have various ways of raising that, and I think the city's contribution is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, something like that. But you're obligated to make sure that you have at least three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, I'm going to tell you why in a second. So now you're left with two hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and two dollars, out of the optimistic one million a year that you're going to raise. The other recitals include spending sales tax on the strain placed on streets, sidewalks, parks, and police protection. So basically, you've got two hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and two dollars, that you're telling the citizens of Wairika are going to be spent on that. Oh yeah, I forgot, and then you also mentioned the fire department. That's not going to happen. This is going to go into the general fund. The problem with general fund money is that you might have it dialed in for the next year, maybe even the next two, I don't know. When I was sitting where you were sitting, we had a horrible time. Okay, the city was in pretty dire straits, we pulled it out, but it wasn't easy, and it wasn't pleasant. And one of the things that we didn't even predict, okay, because there was no way we could, was the pension fund. The pension fund had to be funded, okay, and they, they told the city, hey, you got to kick in the money. And let alone, how about this one? I'm going to say a dirty word, and I apologize, because I know the rules are, don't say a dirty word. Unfunded mandates. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I said it.
It's not as dirty as it gets.
Okay. Now, so I've, I've mentioned a couple of things and, and why this is, it's not fair, it's not a fair presentation to the, to the public. The main reason why it's not fair, okay, and had it, had these things not been in there, but the main reason is the contract language itself, the grant language itself. Any breach of any term, provision, obligation, or requirement of this contract by the grantee shall be a default of this contract. In the case of any default by grantee, grantees is a city, by the way. State shall be entitled to all remedies available under law and equity, including but not limited to a, specific performance, that means that they will require you to do this, they don't care how, I don't know if they'll actually do that, but that's specific performance. B, return of all grant monies. C, payment to the state of the fair market value of the project, property, or the actual sales price, whichever is higher. And D, payment to the state of the costs of enforcement of this contract, including but not limited to court and arbitration costs, fees, expenses, litigation, and reasonable attorney fees. So you go, well, okay, that's the contract stuff, you know, come on, Rob, I mean, what's the big deal? Here's the big deal. Final application guide, right there on page eight. The deed restriction grant notice refers to the contractor requires grantees to ensure operation and maintenance of the project site for thirty years. You just obligated by doing this, future city councils, you tied their hands. The contract requires grantees to ensure operation and maintenance of the project site for thirty years. The thirty-year period begins with the appropriation date, it says it in more than one place, it's on the same page. Okay, there is a problem, there's a problem the way this is presented to the citizens of Wairika. First off, you can't tug at the heartstrings by using police and fire, that's not, that's not right. Because what you're going to do is you're going to throw the fire department under the bus when you actually do need, and by the way, you do need one, a fire station. Why? Because the citizens of Wairika are going to say, hey, we just passed a sales tax, it's right here, it's the first, it's even before the pool and the park. And second, and more importantly, is contract, contract law, I know Mr. Henyon's listening. We'll tell you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate your input. I think you got a little bit of background on logups. I think it is.
Hi, my name is Tristan Holman. I am a resident of Montague. I was trying to get myself as close to Waireka as possible when we lived in South County. I felt like moving closer to Waireka, I'd have more amenities for my family. And we got to Montague. So, um, so that's where I am. I didn't realize when I moved my kids, how much I moved them away from that we don't have in North County. Um, my kids were on the swim team. Might you heard from my seventh grader last city council meeting? And she misses it dearly. They were on the swim team. They were involved in Shasta Studios, which is a lovely dance and theater studio down in Mount Shasta. We don't have dance. We, we don't have much cheer other than what the YNC can offer. By all means, I, you know, I, I love to get behind this whole project and to have that for my kids, for our community, for families. You can, there's so much that you can see about a community by what they offer. Their citizens and their families, what do we offer? Our kids? What do we offer? Our senior citizens, what do we offer? There's just, there's not enough. And so I was absolutely elated at the last meeting that I was at when you guys narrowly decided to move forward with this. And I thank you, Robin, for all of your efforts. Um, I, I see the logistics. I see the, the concern about the finances and I see those fine details about the grants. And I am just so thankful that Robin has looked at all of those too with an even finer tooth comb than I. So thank you for that. And then, um, I just wanted to say, you know, what an opportunity this is with an Olympic sized pool. Tell me, tell me, correct me, please. Okay, so someone said it is. So tell me. And this is. Okay, so it's the size of the weed pool. Okay. So the weed pool is what I grew up down the street from. And, um, the Montague pool is what I'm down the street from now. My kids can't go there on the days that Waireka kids are there. There's not enough room. They can't. Um, I, oh man, an Olympic size, whoa. Twenty five, you know, that's still amazing. A covered pool? Yes. Um, the possibility of your realms, the, the opportunities that that brings to families, to kids small, all the way up to our senior citizens with the water aerobics. My, my mom was a huge fan of water aerobics. And just all of that that, that it brings to our community. I'm sorry, I'm rambling. But, uh, the people that will come to our covered pool from South County, from out of the county, swim meets and all of those things that will stay in our hotels, that will eat at our restaurants, that'll pay that half percent sales tax when they shop in our stores while they're here for our pool. It will happen. We can't look at this through fear. Yes, look at it, you know, with the logistics in mind, but we can't just do everything based on fear. So thank you so much for choosing us in our future as you continue to move forward with this project. We're very grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm Ruth Simpson, live in Waireka. I just had.
Do you mind stating your name? I'm sorry.
Ruth Simpson.
Okay, I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
I've known you a long time. And my, my question is, are there other options? That's what I needed to know. And where's all the water going to come from? Five hundred thousand gallons? And, um, in closing, I like what you said. In closing, observe those who have integrity and watch those whose heart is right. Because a future belongs to persons of peace. And that's from the Bible songs.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments at this point in time? Is there anything online? No? We will close this point. And did you want to address those, some of those questions?
Yeah, I'll address those and I just want to read some public comments into the, uh, into the minutes here, just because I had some written via email and letter.
Oh, yes, please.
And so, um, so I have four, bear with me. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. As residents of almost fifty years in Waireka, we care greatly about our community. If we did not love it and want to stay here, we could have left years ago. It's pretty tough some days to feel optimistic. At this time, nationally and locally, many of us are experiencing economic and political strain. We feel the disagreement and often hostility over our differences. It is easy to feel that we have no control or ability to change things, or at least bring about improvements in our lives. These feelings are discouraging and can be overwhelming, leading to apathy or disillusionment for the system and the feeling of being helpless about bringing about change. I have been giving a lot of thought to this feeling and I don't want to just curl up and feel hopeless. We are always told to vote and I do, but I sure don't always get what I want, especially in a nation of millions. So maybe not, but what we can do is put our energy and hopes for our lives into those of our community right here at home, where we actually can make improvements and achieve common goals that will benefit all of us. This is why we pass bond measures and yes, local taxes for fire protection, schools and libraries. We donate time and resources to hospitals and sports and the arts, multitudes of areas that are strictly local. This is power and we can make good things happen right here in our own town and surrounding communities. Regardless of how bleak and overwhelming the world situation may seem. In the fifty years we have lived here, we have seen this time and again. This is a giving community. David and I are at, David and I absolutely and fully support the one half percent sales tax to fund essential services, including parks, aquatic center and other important local benefits of the proposed measure. If you look at the details, it is a pretty small bite out of everyday living with a very powerful return for all of us. And critical to the success, we will be thoughtful and careful leadership as well as community support and input. This is a strong community. We can accomplish this if we just, this, if we decide, if we decided to support it and make it happen. We hope you will help in the effort to be bold and innovative. Help us all move forward to make very important and positive actions for our town and surrounding areas. These are quality of life issues. Let's get going and make it happen. Thank you, Betty, Betsy and David Shutteroff. And they've been residents of Waireka for fifty years. And pardon me on the names, but I believe this is, this next one's from Pamela Cook, possibly. Okay. Please forward this message to Mr. Paul McCoy. I was unable to send email directly to him. We own a house across from the newly constructed Dollar General area that is a haven for homeless and mentally ill at times, even though it is a well-kept business. But the street is not designed for heavy traffic. Let's not use the same mentality to build a safe harbor for our children and community by building the swim center and native park at the proposed site. Please reconsider, children are left at swim centers and parks unsupervised. Do not let them be targets for the mentally ill and predators, which do make up many of the homeless population. Please reconsider improving the existing swimming pool and park area. Make it safe, affordable and sustainable, especially in our current rocky economy. City has enough vacant and dilapidated former business buildings that cannot be maintained. Building up existing park area could encourage people to come into Waireka to shop downtown and eat instead of bypassing Waireka for Ashland and Medford. Thank you for your consideration. This next one is from Jan Osborne. So there is a time, there is a time to reap and a time to sow, a time to try and a time to let go. This is the time to let go of the grant for the Waireka Swim Center and Native Park. I have repeatedly asked for your responses to my questions and concerns about the grant, which I emailed each of you on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Only one council member has had the courtesy to address my questions and concerns. No one on the council has given, in my opinion, valid reasons for creating a pool and park that the city cannot afford and locating it in proximity to a housing facility for the seriously mentally ill and the site of a proposed urban campground for the homeless. Fond memories of mommy and me swim classes, being tired of saying we are too poor and feeling embarrassed that Montague has a pool and we don't are not reasons enough to encumber the city for thirty years. Saying that we need to do this for the children, not only denigrates the volunteer efforts of many Waireka citizens who coach youth sports teams, lead church youth groups, provide children's activities at the library, guide four H youth, sponsor the Lego club and more, but as an attempt to silence the opposition, it is much like playing the race card. The city has provided playgrounds, basketball courts, sports playing fields, a fishing lake and hiking trails. Our children have plenty of things to do. At this time, the city is trying to alter some conditions in the grant. What the public was told about the features and costs of the project several months ago will probably not be what we actually would see. Example, length of season, number and size of pools, chemicals and supplies costs. The proposed ballot language again puts the maintenance and operation of a non-essential, non-existent park and pool together with essential services. This is an obfuscation, pardon me. If a motion is made, please don't second it. If it comes to a vote, please vote no. Respectfully, Jan Osborne, ten twenty seven North Street, Waireka. This is, this is my last one. And this is from Donna Batchigalupi. Dear city councilmen, after attending your meeting and listening to two presentations on the proposed swimming pool part grant proposal and reading the city manager's report, I hope to persuade you that this is a project that the city cannot afford to tackle. There are so many negatives, for example. One, city doesn't know what the final bill might be for construction. Two, city has little idea how many employees will be needed and what the benefit package will cost. The city parks and rec guys are already burdened with the homeless mess. Three, city has given little thought, it appears to me, as to all the transit people who will be using the facilities, which is a treat to children. From my understanding, there is a mental health housing project going, going to be built next door, not to mention a homeless camp in a Beacon of Hope facility right around the corner. All this to say, full-time security, parents are not going to allow their children to go there by themselves to swim. Also, how do you prevent the homeless and freeway travelers from using, using as a bathtub? Four, huge amount of water will be needed as it will have to be emptied and refill, refilled fairly often. Five, it is my understanding that the pool can only be opened a few months per year because of financial restraints. Six, we are living in uncertain financial times. Neither the public nor the city knows what will happen in the future. If for some reason the city cannot finish the project and have to pay back the money, probably with interest, how will this be done? Another tax that goes into the general fund? Seven, I believe that, that, I believe that it was very unfortunate and maybe a trick to put the needs of the fire department into the same initiative as the swimming pool. Eight, as I've said many times, there may, there may be bodies buried on the proposed site. The answer has been the SEQA would figure that out. Is that process before you make a commitment or after? Nine, the cost of maintenance is unaffordable for a business that cannot charge a fee except for special occasions. Ten, no parent is going to allow their child to ride their bike to the pool park when they have to cross major intersections, at least six driveways with many cars. Is there going to be stoplights? At all of them? Or is this mainly aimed for the kids living in the adjacent apartment houses? Eleven, more recent thoughts should be given to another site or revitalizing the old site by using sales tax money and giving up grant money that always ends up costing more and usually has strings. Twelve, I do not believe that the idea that what, that this will bring a significant number of visitors to the city has much merit. Thirteen, we are a rural community. We have lakes and forests and rivers for recreation. I, I can't see that we need more parks. Maybe the developers of the housing project should have had to put one in as happens in other cities. Pros, one, it will give the kids a great summer recreation opportunity and a great babysitter for working parents. Two, great place for adults to exercise, although if it's full of kids, adult usage may be limited. And three, I, I sure, there are a few more, but can't think of them. Respectfully submitted, Donna Batchigalupi. And then I will answer a few questions if that's okay.
Yes, is there anything online that we did address as far as public comments? So then I guess we'll close with comments and then go to answering some of these questions. Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, thank you. No specific order, what I've written down. Uh, are there other options? There were other options on the April fifth meeting that you can go back and either read the minutes or watch online as far as what was proposed to the council. Where will the water come from? It will come from the city, but the parks department would have to pay for the water that they use at the site. The cost of the old pool demo is roughly, to my understanding, about a million dollars. Uh, new firehouse, yes. Reta has been working and Cindy and Public Works, uh, were waiting on the finalization of a planning grant that we verbally have been told we will be getting, which will be the start of determining where a new fire hall will go and the design of that fire hall. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Questions? Did you have anything else on there? Mr. McCoy, I know you're taking notes on, on some of these questions. You should take good notes. You're good at that.
Oh, and I think there was one more item. Yes, most, most grants are reimbursable, meaning you don't actually get the money. You have to spend the money and then you get reimbursed for the spending as you go. And so that's what would happen in this case, but it's very, that, that part of it is very common. Exactly. So just as the construction of the police department, as Ms. Smith Freeman pointed out.
May I make a comment? And I'm not in any way trying to impugn our honorable city manager. A million dollars was the budgeted in the, in the bid that we got originally to redo Ringy Pool. We have had bids from local contractors up downwards, about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand. Where we run into, run up the cost is there's a lot of asbestos in that pool and that building. And there's a lot of other things that have to haul the way those all have to go south of Sacramento.
Yeah, and I'll just comment on that is.
I don't mean to, I'm not trying to impugn you in any way, sir.
No, and just to clarify, to redo the pool, I think with inflation based off of the latest information, I think is roughly eight and a half million. Six and a half million in twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen by McClellan out of New York State. But then when we do talk about remediation and abatement, generally speaking, having done a lot of those projects at the county, there's certifications required to do that type of work. And generally speaking of this scale, it's it's, I am not aware of a local contractor that does that, that does that type of work.
I'm not in disagreement with you. I just wanted to point out the, that, you know, the difference. What's going to cost is hauling everything away. Devolution is pretty minor.
Another question that Luis had was also, how many months of operation was there? And, you know, hours, I know it's not written in there technically, but is there any-
I would have to get back to Luis on, on that because I would want to verify within the grant application.
Rob, Rob, could you-
Yeah, and just so it, things don't kind of spin off, I mean, and Robin, yeah, please, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium, but I-
There's people that's on, on Zoom that can't hear what we're talking about in the background. Please, please come up.
Yeah, there was, you know, verbally, you know, and that, that's the difference here, and it's kind of what I referenced before, is that when you verbally talk to an agency, you can't take, we don't offer verbal confirmation, you know, that's our stance at the city. You will get a legally binding document or a letter, as we've kind of discussed in the past from us. We don't just tell people, yeah, go ahead, we write it down. And so, having discussed this with the Parks Department over the phone, they made a lot of concessions, like, oh, you just need to have a pool up there. And so they also made concessions over the timeframe of how long the pool needs to be open based off the grant application. It seemed like they were flexible, but I would say based off of the status report on the required project deliverables, they certainly have reneged on what they stated to me over the phone, although how long it's open is not listed in here as far as the requirement.
Right, that's, that's what I was gonna say. So I think that we'd have to find out if it was negotiable. Because I think we had talked about it when we redid the cost of maintenance and operations. We did scale back from the eight months down to probably three or four, wasn't it?
Yeah, we were closer to three, three and a half, yeah.
The actual park needs to be open all year round. Okay.
I'm sorry, so is this a new term that's being introduced? Because if it is, this is not, this is not appropriate. Because what, what the document that I pulled from, from the website, okay, the Wairika website in preparation for this, the city of Wairika, where you have Swim Center and Native Park. Okay, and then it says here estimated expenses for pool and park. And that's how they're coming up with three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And the asterisk says the pool facility will have a retractable closer, which will be open from spring through fall, about eight months. Okay, and so then this whole expenditure is based on, is based on that. So I'm not quite sure why is, why is it no longer eight months? Is it three months? Is it one month? What, what, what is it? It's eight months according to a document that you presented to the public.
Oh, good, good point. Thank you, Rob. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. I wanted to add, I don't think most people know the, good, good question about the filling of the pool. But most people probably don't realize that Wairika, we now have to pay for our own water that we use in our parks. That we, that we are limited there and that we pay for that. It seems kind of dumb, since when O.G. LaBaron and the council got the Fall Creek Water Inn, that services up to fifteen, populated, a town of up to fifteen thousand population, and that now we have to pay for every doll, every gallon of water that we use in our public parks. So we're going to pay for it one way or the other.
Yep.
Just, I just wanted to make that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there, first, if there's any way that we can, sorry, if there's any way that we can pull the original estimates from the consultant that we invited to review the condition of Ringy Pool from seven years ago? Something like that.
Four years ago.
No, it's all four.
It was when I took, it was when I took my seat, we saw that. It was like six million dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah. Yeah, I thought it was a lot more.
Yeah, it was in the-
We only got one. We didn't have anybody else come back. Local contractors have told us quite a bit less. That's why we do have other options. So, and I'm glad Ruth brought that up because we do need to discuss that as well. An option-
Seven million, eight million dollars.
Well, that was back a few years ago, so I'm sure it's not the same.
It's by nine now.
Yes. We're done.
Um, I just wanted to make a few comments. I was just wondering if anyone here knows- Can you hear me now? Does anyone here know the number one reason of death? From infant to fourteen years old? The number one. This was told to me by the director of the YMCA. It's drowning. Our children do deserve to learn how to swim. I feel very passionately about this. Anyone that's been here realizes this, that I feel very strongly that we need a pool. I liked what Betsy Shutteroff said, to be bold. I don't think this is an easy decision. It's not one that comes lightly to any of us. As Rob had said earlier, we've, we've had to make many difficult decisions over the eight years that we've been on. So, Kristin Holden from Montague. I appreciate what you had to say, and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think that Wairika was a better place when we had our swim team, when the high school had a swim team, and we had all the families coming into town for the swim team. Buzzy can tell you all about that. She was at the pool at that time. I feel very strongly that's going to bring a lot of money into town. That's economic development. People are going to come and stay here and eat here and bring their kids and maybe come back, and who knows, maybe move here like you talked about. I know that there are people, maybe some in this room, that have access to their very own swimming pool. I don't. But I feel very strongly that our kids and our seniors have a right to that. And I know that the tribe is interested in that as well, for their seniors as well as for their children to learn how to swim. I feel very strongly that we, that I, that our citizens deserve to have a pool. I know that the city of Weed has two pools, an indoor pool and an outdoor pool. I know that the little tiny city of Etna with seven hundred and fifty maybe citizens has a very nice pool. I know that the little tiny city of Dunsmere with maybe three thousand, I don't think, maybe two thousand. They have, they have a nice pool. And somebody talked about people going to Medford and Ashland. They have pools. They have pools up there. Is that really what we want to do? Send people to Medford and Ashland to go swimming? I don't think there's a lot of kids around here, when their parents are working especially, that can get up to Ashland. I sit on the local transportation commission, and I have met Nancy Oberen, Supervisor Oberen does as well. And we've made sure that there's transportation for the kids to get to the Montague Pool, but that's not a solution. That's a Band-Aid. That's temporary. But the kids from around town, we've got a, we've got a bus stop right in front of the YMCA now. So, I just, I, I feel like, as Betsy said, we need to be bold. I think we need to make a difficult decision. And keep in mind, if the citizens vote this down, it's not going to happen, because we won't be able to afford it. So the citizens do have a choice. And I'm hoping, I mean, it's feeling like the people that have contacted me, it's about fifty-fifty. I don't know. I guess we'll find out if we get into the ballot. I'm hoping that we will. But I just feel very strongly that in order to be a better community, in order to be a community, as you, as you said, Kristin, right? Kristin, that we have so little for our kids to do and, and our seniors. That, you know, I just think we need to be bold. I think we need to make this decision, go forward. I do believe that in the long run, I think we'll come out ahead. But that's my feeling, and I feel very strongly.
To address a question, and I actually want to ask Mr. Ledbetter. Oh, he's stated before the, being able to afford this project. And is your statement before saying, what was your approximation on what this project would actually cost? In your, in your opinion, what you researched out?
In my opinion, on the latest, the latest pool within the state that was built down in the Bay Area that was actually a renovation of an existing outdoor pool, it's not, doesn't have the over, the enclosure. My understanding is that was a twenty-six million dollar project. And so, based off of the investigating that I have done, I feel that this project is closer in the twenty-five million dollar range. To have two pools, a pool house, the fence, the park in and of itself is the, that's the reality for me. And I know that that's very contentious, obviously. I feel like I laid out what I believe to be the facts on April fifth, and it really is up to the council and/or, I guess, if this goes to the ballot measure. But twenty-five million is where I personally stand with my experience in education and outreach on this matter.
Mr. Ledbetter, can I ask one of your staff to come down and make a comment on that, too?
Absolutely.
Could I ask Giuliana to come down? I know she has a background in some of this.
Maybe she can give her background on her family's business.
Hi, and just a quick review. Hi, my name is Juliana Lucchese. I live at forty-four oh nine Holly Avenue, Dunsmere. Dunsmere is about twenty-two hundred people, and our pool is actually three hundred thousand dollars in the hole. So it's actually not in a good financial stance. So, but yeah, people like it, but it is a money pit. So my family owns a mechanical contracting company in Wisconsin, and we've been operating for over seventy-five years. And we do industrial and commercial facilities. We've done everything from the Brewers Stadium for the Milwaukee Brewers team, as well as aquatic centers, you know, pump systems and all that other fun stuff. My dad just retired this year, which is awesome for him. And, and so, yeah, we do actually have some experience with aquatic facilities. We're all registered to work in California, Wisconsin, Florida, and several other states, but those are the three main ones that we work in. And so our last project that we did was Wawa Tosa West High School, which is in Wisconsin. It was a remodel of an existing pool for a school facility, for a school aquatics team, which meets similar parameters is what you're looking for. And that was a remodel, and that was a ten-point-four million dollar project in Wisconsin, which has a lower kind of what we call a factor than other states. California has one of the higher factors that we apply to some of our projects. So that's just a remodel, was a ten-point-four. Some of my concerns with the project that I voiced in terms of just the design and engineering that I think needs to have some more thought process put through is that there is no budget in the grant for HVAC system, pumps, or chemical management, which tend to be some of your most costly equipment pieces, as well as some of your most costly operating procedures for that. So, yeah, so that's kind of just a small background. I did work with the company as well from twelve and a half until twenty-one. In Wisconsin, it's legal for kids twelve and a half to start working for a family-owned business. So I've worked in a number of different departments for them, as well as doing their bidding process and preparing their operations and maintenance manuals.
Giuliana, I think, just to get back to the mayor's original question, did you take this grant with these deliverables and have them assessed by a member of that organization? And did they give you a California cost associated with that?
Yeah, I just sent it over to see what they would look at, since they've done a couple of facilities recently, and we pegged it at about twenty-eight million.
I'll repeat that again?
Twenty-
Twenty-eight million?
Yeah. My personal assessment, just based on the environmental, that would also have to still happen and some of the mitigations. I, and then looking at, you know, the different supplies that are happening with the market, I mean, my conservative estimate would be thirty-two point eight. But again, I also like to come in under budget and anticipate unforeseen circumstances. But again, from the assessment from them, it was about a twenty-eight million dollar build. There are certain things that aren't clarified within the design itself. So again, the retractable roof needs a lot more flushing out in terms of what level of the California building code that we're applying. So again, if you have an indoor facility with a retractable roof that has different California building code requirements than an outdoor pool with a screen over the top with no walls, and that also changes your HVAC needs and different features like that. So there are a lot of unknowns with the design itself in those terms as you go forward. When I sent it over, just to see what others would think, at my family's company, I said assume it's an indoor facility. So again, if anything on the walls are kind of closed off, even if you have that retractable roof, it would be considered indoor in the California building code. So we would have to build it to those standards. Again, it's hard to get everything together, which is why I would personally go for the higher number, because there's a lot of things that would need to be flushed out in the design and engineering process as part of this. It's not a straightforward build.
Well, thank you, Giuliana. And just for clarification, this is impromptu, and this, these are requested, I guess, information you're asking for, we're not, but just for the public that really supports this pool. As the city manager, I am not up here bad-talking the pool and giving numbers that I think are fictitious. Giuliana is not asking to come up to the podium. She was requested to.
Yes. So I'm looking at, the city of Sacramento just opened up a huge aquatic center in Norris, Natomas. Just opened up. If you go to Mayor, pro Vice Mayor, Angelique Ashby's page, this is it. You can't see it. They have living-sized pool, a regular-sized pool. They have a kid pool with sprinklers going around, they have water slides, it's retractable roofs, they have cabanas. They finished that project for twelve and a half million dollars. It's four times-
Four times the size.
Size of this one in Wairika. So how did they do it for twelve and a half million dollars? Go and look at it. It's huge. They got grants, the city supported them. Like I say, it says right here at the bottom, they have amenities, zero-depth entry splash pool play structure, spiritual, or spiral, sorry, water slides. Twenty-five yards, could be spiritual water. Twenty-five yard recreational pool, feet fifty-meter competition pool with two low springboard diving boards, shaded picnic tables, cabanas, gym-style restrooms with showers and lockers, locks not included, family changing rooms, grass areas, parking lot, twelve and a half million dollars. Completed. What's that? Say, it's really, it probably did.
I just want to clarify, because it's a little difficult to kind of hop into this conversation. But doing that research here on my own, just with Google, KCRA is saying that's a forty-five million dollar project and was five years- So I just want to clarify, because it's kind of hard to just Google search and then make those statements, so.
You're saying they're staying forty-five million, and this-
I'm telling you, KCRA, the local news is saying- It's forty-five.
Yes.
Well, you know, when we were putting this together and the committee was meeting, Robin, can you come down? I specifically wanted to ask her because she has, I'm sure the figures in her- But we did research other areas, and one of the ones that we researched was in Lake Tahoe.
That was for maintenance and operation?
Maintenance and operation.
Yeah, not the building-
Much lower than what we've heard. About what was the cost?
The maintenance and operation was about four hundred thousand per year. But it was a much larger facility. It was covered full-time. It was, and it was a permanent cover. Yeah, this is not, the HVAC thing is the reason that we put in the retractable cover is really to have it open, so you don't have the HVAC issue that Giuliana mentioned. It would be an open one and more of an outdoor e-pool with a cover as opposed to an indoor pool that's going to be that way. So it's a little bit different. Yeah, and, and much of the stuff we've done, I mean, obviously, things have gone up, but, yeah, we'd have to kind of look and see. Yeah. I don't have any other numbers on the building, though. I just have the numbers on the, I guess, operation.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, it's good, we need all the information we can get. Yeah, sure. Yes, Mr. Smith. One thing Giuliana shared is that Dunsmere is in the hole, $300,000. I'd also like to share that the Dunsmere High School District is the smallest high school district in the United States of America, has been for about the last nine to 10 years, when Len, when Len was there. I don't, I think, so I mean, it's hard, I know they're running a transition, they're in $300,000, but it's hard to look at it, the town is that small. We, our high school is small, too, but I moved here, 1,200 now, it's about 600. Yeah. But, you know.
But, but you know what, Etna's a small town, too. Their communication.
Yeah. So, possible comments, terms?
Yeah, Jason Ledbetter, City Mayor, I just want to clarify once again, I'm not here to poo-poo anything, I am just answering questions that have been directed towards me.
May I just for a second?
Yes.
So, so, just going over the cost, but I hear the concerns from people, but I, you know, instead, we don't have the money unless the taxpayers vote this in, I, you know, it's up to them, because I know we don't have the money right now just to say, hey, let's go ahead and do this, and we don't have the money to support the pool. But I'm also believer that all the naysayers and no votes up here, the yes votes have the equal right to go and vote what they believe in, just many of the people saying no, I've had many people in support of this. And so I wholeheartedly believe it's for our citizens to decide if they want to pitch in a few extra dollars a month. I think it came out a few months ago that, like, 38% of the locals are paying the sales tax, the rest of us, sales tax are paid from tourists, people come in to visit, spending money in the hotel, you know, stopping by, and I hear you say tourists under your breath over there, people, I say tourists that come in for a night or two nights off I-5, and they come in and spend the hotel, I call them tourists. They might not be tourists, like tourists you see walking around San Francisco or Sacramento or, you know, whatever, but they stop here, they're tourists. Well, I'm just saying, they come in and spend money in the hotels, they go to the store, they buy something, it's going to be taxable. You know, people stop here off I-5, you know, people, maybe there's not big tourists here, there is tourists right now, because I see them coming over to the valley, all over the rivers, they're camping, I see their cap, cam trailers, even with inflation gas up, I still see people traveling, I still see people with pumps, their big RVs, and going in the gas station, buy something every day, just go up the north, the south end of town, just go out there, see those gas stations backed up, go to radio, go to Walmart. I'm not dying on the vine here, people might think that, and so I just believe, you know, there's the naysayers way too long in Puerto Rico, you know, for a long time, no to this, no to that, no, no, no. So, I hold a belief that it's in front of the voters come November, and it's their decision, you know, whether they want it, and that, just go to Ms. Hogan, and your daughter, when she got up there, spoke, took a lot of courage, she was the youngest person to speak, and it's not a majority of the people I hear speaking on the nose do not have younger kids. I might be needy, but the people who are spoke, speaking to say no on pool are not people children. You're speaking for them, they're not going to send their kids up there, you don't know that. You're not there to parent them, to let them ride their bikes up there, who's that for you to say? They trust their kid to ride their bike uphill drive? Who's that for you to say they're not going to let their kid do that? That's your opinion judging or parenting their kids. Yes, don't take your head, no, what gives you the right to parent someone else's kids or have them say they're not going to do that? Because there might be a parent who lets their kids ride a bike uphill, you know? There might be parents who don't, but that's their parenting, and that's their choice, just as I think it's their choice when people vote the ballot, if they want this pool, they will say yes, or they will vote no, and it will determine the outcome. I'm sorry, it's my time.
Yes.
So I believe it's up to the voters, so that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, just one more thought. I would not have a problem at all if the ballot wasn't written with an essential item included on it. It's very misleading, and that's my major concern, otherwise I'd say, go forth, because if they want it, that's theirs, but I think, I think a large portion of the population is going to think they're voting for infrastructure, police, public safety measures, that kind of thing. I think it's not written the way I would support it.
Like I said, there's, do we need a swim pool? Absolutely, in this community, we, I talked about this before, I learned how to swim, right there, ringy pool, it's, it's a necessity, we need to teach our kids to swim, they need to learn, because that is the cause of death, and I'm here, because I almost drowned myself before I was learning how to swim, so it is a necessity, absolutely, absolutely. There's a lot of, my, my viewpoint is, it's very hard, because I think that, at this point, we're deceiving the public. To be able to build this for 8.5 million is not a practical thing, and to the verbiage of this tax initiative, like Rob has stated, is not true to form. Do I want a pool? Absolutely, I've been big supporter from this one, day one, I've been involved in this and wanted to see it, and I still do. I think there's too many unknowns at this point in time before we can push forward with this swimming pool. This is my opinion, and I'm not aiming towards anything. I have gotten numerous phone calls, numerous emails on both sides, but the majority of it was not for, at this, at this location, or the way we are doing this as far as the tax initiative, like it stated, like Rob stated, it's deceiving. And if I, I look at it as in the view that if we are misleading the public, that's wrong. You can't say one thing and know, like I said, going into this thing, knowing that we cannot build this thing for 8.5 million, that's, we're deceiving the public, and to mix it in with fire protection, fire, like Rob stated, it is, this is incorrect. We're going to do it, we need to do it right, and this is not the proper way to do it. Do I think that the public should be the ones to decide this? Absolutely, absolutely, but the way this is being presented is not correct. I know, I probably won't be the very popular person, but I got to do what's right for the community, to listen to the community, to know that the future of our community will be secured, and that's where I stand at this point. I'm still open for any more councilman comments. This is probably one of the harder decisions we've had to make in a very, very, very long time.
We ready for a motion?
I'm ready for whatever the, the council wants to throw out.
Well, I'm going to throw it out there. I'd like a motion to approve the introduction of the ordinance, first reading, entitled and ordinance of the City of Puerto Rico imposing a transaction use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and pass the ordinance and resolution to the August 2nd, 2022 council meeting, for the ordinance and resolution second reading and possible adoption.
We have a motion by John Smith Green. Do we have a second? It's like I said, it's one of the harder decisions we've got to make as a council. We've got lots of decisions to make.
It's hard.
Can the wording of the sales tax be amended?
If we can get Mr. Henyon possibly on the line there to, to chime in on the timeframes and the legality of, of any changes that may take place tonight on the wording.
Okay, the, there's two different things before you. One of them is the resolution and basically the ballot measure referring to the ordinance that would be adopted. The ordinance doesn't have any statement in it about pools or anything else, it just says that it's a general fund tax. So I wouldn't anticipate that there would be any modifications needed to the ordinance. Now, the other part is a resolution, which would, if adopted, if the public eventually voted for the ordinance adoption, would become effective, and a resolution can be changed now, a resolution can be changed at the next meeting, and reworded so that it, so that it reflects what the will of the council is. And I specifically told the mayor earlier today that if they wanted to change the resolution, that's why it's in front of you, so that you can look at it and determine whether you want that particular wording or some other wording. And so, you have the luxury of changing the resolution, you would need to pass the ordinance on to a second reading, and it couldn't be adopted on, it couldn't be adopted until the, there was at least four votes favorable to it in its second reading. If you wanted to make changes again at the August 2nd meeting, then we would have to continue that meeting for five days, and to leave it as a general session meeting, and it could be adopted with a five-day space in between the introduction and the resolution. But I hope that answers your question. It seems to me like what several of the council members are saying is a disagreement over, primarily, the language of the measure itself, and if the council could come to an agreement on, that, that measured language was based on what the original motion was, but if the city council wants to modify how that language reads, then just tell us, and, and the next read, at the next reading of the ordinance and the resolution, it'll reflect exactly what the city council feels comfortable with.
So as, as it stands right now, we have a motion, so this motion, we need to call, and we have that discussion, or we have a second on that, but that's where we're at at this point in time, just so everybody knows.
So, one would think that the motion that has not been seconded was to pass the resolution on and the ordinance on to the next meeting, and it's still within your e.g.s in discussion of the resolution, which is why I put it on in this meeting, to give further direction of how you want it to read, and then pass that on to the August 2nd meeting, knowing that we will, of course, reflect the will of the council. And then if you don't like it, how it reads, the next time, you can change it again, or you can kill it, I mean, it takes four votes, so you've got plenty of chances to turn it down.
So we're still standing, we're, but a majority of the citizens and whoever we're hearing want the pool. We want to go for the voters, but they don't like that we are, it's a concern of mine, that they're saying it's fire department, police, and so that's what sounds like a majority wants to hang up, having that mixed in with that, so, yeah. And I agree, it's misleading, and by, it's misleading our public, but also I know, moving forward, we do need a pool, and, but maybe we need to reword it, and then they go knowing what they're actually voting for, just for a pool only and not fire department.
But it's a 30-year commitment to other?
I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the, what I'm hearing, the verbiage of this.
Right.
Because they're going to tell us yes or no.
Right.
Does it make a difference to the council to reword the sales tax generally, to go into, we don't, we almost want a general fund, we all, we're all aware of what Attorney Pacheco said, that if it goes into general fund, it can be spent anywhere. We, as a council, could take the Measure C money to go, sorry, no more roads, we're going to throw that into the theater, we're going to spend a million on a theater, we're going to spend a million on a community center, we don't, you know, we don't care about roads, so we can do that. I pointed out that we haven't done that. We've not done, we carried on what past councils want. We can't be responsible for a future council decision, because we're not, we're just, we're not going to be there yet. I, I mean, I am, I'd be much more supportive of it if we could somehow reword it, and I understand, we've heard from, we've heard contractual, from Councilman Pacheco, we've heard former council.
Yes.
Well, one's counsel.
Former mayor.
Former mayor, too. We have heard passionate testimony from Lorenzo and others for, and passionate testimony from Robin and others for, the Hammers have been probably the two people that are the quietest, and the three meetings that they've attended, and I think they're just here honestly to support the council, and we appreciate that.
Yes. We'll put you on the spot.
This, one of the things that I ran on was, and this community does deserve to be, and the fact, again, no offense to former councils and former city managers, but the fact that they kicked the can down the road, they do this, for the last 12 years, that can's been kicked down the road, somebody, somewhere, a council has got to take a stand, whether it's this pool, whether it's a pool at Ringy, whether it's a pool over by COS, you know, whatever. God knows, we've been working for two years, I've been on three years, one of my other parties was a fire hall, and we're finally just now getting a grant to do a study. I mean, you know, it's taken us that long, and it'd probably take us another five to seven years to build it, even though, so, I mean, I'd like to see the language changed some, because I'd like to be confident that, the sales tax to me isn't a huge thing, I figured it out, I think for my wife and I, it's $35, maybe a month. We're going to get big rebates from the federal government on our tax, on our, on our gas tax, it's going to amount to the next three months from, from our gas tax, we're going to probably be saving about $48. The federal government, now that's going to fill, my tax $200 will fill, so I love that, my, and I'm not getting, I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming Biden or Trump, I'm not going to blame either, because they got to adjust, but $6.5 billion, but the federal government's going to lose, because they're going to give up that tax. We know that this tax is going to bring us in right around $1 million, we know that. Reta has talked to us as a council. Reta has talked to us as a council about the things that we can do with that. Not the whole million, just being able to leverage that, like we've leveraged for a new police department. Like we've leveraged in order to do new infrastructure here, Main Street, that throughout, leveraging, you know, and, and, and grants too, I understand. And with registry, fixing sewer and water, again, that I guess from, from what I've heard on the worst line about, the residents have complained about for ten to twelve years. So we, so we've got a lot going on, but I think that this sales tax, I'm going to be honest with the public. I can remember speaking about it with Steve Baker long before the pool. And then we, and then it was our interim city manager said, I cannot believe you guys have not passed another half percent, Randy said. Because he said, that's the only way you're going to, you're only going to get any money to do anything, whether it's a pool or whatever, or a firehouse, whatever you want. And I disagree with Randy a lot, but I think the half percent sales tax, I really think these were flawed. And I think if we could change the wording on this, then you do have the leverage to use it for what you want to use it for. You could also only need the fifty percent plus one, which, which I think is, which I think is important. And I'm not a tax spender, but again, and I was a business owner for seven years. I know what I lost, but I also know that people went over the hill anyway. They said, I can buy, I can buy refrigerator from Walmart, Sears for two thousand. I can buy it for seventeen hundred up there and bring it home and, 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 and put it in. And then they called me and say, well, we bought it up at Home Depot. Can you come and put it in? No, I'm not going to come. So, you know, haters are going to be haters. People are going to complain. We have people on both sides. None of us wants, I don't think any of us in council wants to go into debt. I don't think any of us wants to have to send back, you know, millions of dollars. I'm going to tell you that I don't buy eight half million. I also don't buy twenty-three. I, I think here, I think somewhere along the line, I was looking at, I was going with my neighbor who's a steel worker out of Los Angeles, going through the price of steel, the price of steel had gone up because COVID, but it's back down. Price of lumber up during COVID, but it's back down. Now, and you say, well, you're rambling. But the whole thing is, we probably don't know enough about what it's going to cost us. Probably don't. And that's what, that is what we're looking like as a council. But I, I think, I think we need to look at this sales tax realistically and figure out how we can put it out to the public. Because I think if we don't do it now, we'll be doing it again in twenty-two. So I would like to see a rewording of it. I don't know, Don, but thank you.
Can we ask Don that? So is that possible? I, I thought I heard him say that, that if we reword it, Don, are you there? We reword the actual, you know, what's going on the ballot between now and the next meeting. Is that going to work? Is this is the first reading, not the second? Because it has to be to the county clerk by August 12th. And our next meeting is what, August 2nd?
Yeah, it will work.
I don't realize, there may not work for that. I understand.
I would support that.
So would the verbiage be general fund or general expenses? Would it make reference to the pool or the fire department?
We haven't done it. Both, I guess that's, I guess that's what I'm talking about. Are we still, are we still going to do both? And I guess that's the confusion part, both of what the verbiage said, fire department and the swimming pool or, you know, aquatic park on Put Hill Drive is what it stated on the thing. Because that's, that's the deceiving part. So that's how we need to come back. I, I don't think we put either.
I agree. A general tax, I'd be okay with.
Here's the deal. If the five of us or whoever gets elected, three of us, three, three of us going to be up for reelection, mayor, maybe or maybe not. If, if, if they can't trust us.
Yep.
If the public can't trust the five that are sitting here in November to spend it wisely, wisely, then, then we're doing a disservice.
What verbiage do you want? Do you want it to be, have the pool initiative in it? Just that?
Just, just general sales tax. I mean, I, I have, again, I would say what, what, where I'm, I can't speak for the four of you and I would not think to speak for the four of you. I've asked our, our city manager, I want to say master plan for parks. This isn't because of pool. This is because we're paying for our water now. Our sprinklers are got to be twenty-five, thirty years old. So we've got stuff there, it's got to be done. We've got roads that have to be done. You know, we're going to be tearing up South Oregon. Granted, that's all budgeted. I understand that and money is, is going in and out and a lot of it's budgeted or comes out of Measure C. You know, when, when Ben Miller finally made those signs and said, this work funded by Measure C, we got more out of that. People that didn't vote for the tax said, oh my God, I didn't know that's what you were intending to say, right? I said, you're kidding. And that would have happened, you were a council. And, but stuff like that, you know, but I think there were just, you know, and that was specific probably at coming into thirds. Am I correct?
No, that was a general fund fifty plus one.
And we have spent the money exactly on what we said. So, Measure H was fire.
Measure H was fire, that was the two thirds.
Measure C was the roads and.
So again, I can't consciously sit here and badmouth the council before it because I've watched the roads getting redone on my half set. And it doesn't kill me. We heard, I think in one of our meetings, about sixty-five percent of our sales tax is coming from without, not from within. Only thirty-five percent comes from within, white right.
Yeah.
Sixty-five percent, which comes from without.
Right.
You know, nobody's going to be happy with this deal. Nobody's going to be happy. If we don't get a pool, then, you know, I could look at people and say, well, I told you I was going to work for a pool. No, we're not, we're not getting a pool. Don't worry about it.
They're going to scare us.
Oh, you do. And if I tell them we're, you know, we're the same as the fire, fire outs, you know, well, you didn't get it. I mean, I, I'm frustrated when people walk up to me and talk about homeless and say, how come you guys aren't doing anything? We're going to work with, I've been working for three and a half years. And so, I mean, I, I think we have to be honest with people. We have to, we have to be open, we have to be forthright.
Yep.
And, and then if you knock on doors, when you knock on doors to say, would you support this? Would you support this? Then, you know. That, that's, that's where the, 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 the metal meets the road. The rubber meets the road is when you're out face to face with people. People are going to say whatever they want about you. You got to put it on Facebook. You got to put it on TikTok. You got to put whatever. So I'd have to tend to agree with you. I don't, this, this tax initiative is upstairs to deceiving. If it's going to be ordered, it has to be ordered as a general, a general fund. And what happened on prior councils and how that was stated, yeah, it's getting spent in those things that were promised. Could it be changed? Yes, it can be changed because it's going in, that measure was going into a general fund. And like I said, it's, that's the only way I could see that it's proper because I can't, I can't go into it going, knowing that this is being listed the way it's listed and vote for it. I can't, I got this conversation. I can't. It's not right, it's deceiving.
Yeah.
And I, it's not the proper thing. It's not what the citizens want. Whether you got fifty percent of the, of this or whatever, my email, my phone is blowing up on the other side. Yes, there was a percentage of people for it? Absolutely. Because people that are for it wants a swimming pool. No one here on this table wants a swimming pool by any more than I do. I mean. I'm sorry, I shouldn't state that, but it's the truth. I do.
I think I want it more than you.
Yeah, yeah, I think you probably do. But I, I can't, I can't go forward with, with that verbiage.
Can we change the verbiage? That's, that's the question, not here, not tonight, but between now and the next meeting. Because we can't.
That's based on what Don's stating that he can do that.
Yes.
I feel like we have an ordinance tied, we have a resolution tied to an ordinance. The resolution's malleable and the ordinance, I think, would need, and Don Henyon, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the ordinance first reading would have to be completed and voted on tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Henyon?
It's, it's, doesn't necessarily have to be voted on, but it needs to be introduced and passed to the next meeting for possible adoption.
That's what I said.
Thank you.
I didn't get a second, so I guess it fails for lack of a second.
So, Mr. Henyon, if we, if the council decides to move forward and make alterations, direct staff to make alterations to the language of the ballot measure from the resolution, they can have the first reading of the ordinance tonight, move forward and come back on August 2nd with new language or they can actually.
That's exactly right.
Okay, or they can actually change the language tonight, which I personally don't recommend doing.
It'd be difficult.
I don't recommend it. And, and also for that matter, Mr. Mayor, in the past, I think when we first went down this path, there was some interest from the public that maybe very similarly, you voted on something that wasn't technically on the agenda in the same way.
Absolutely.
Well, then what about a special meeting? Because it still has to be done and to the council by August 2nd.
That's good, I guess, I guess we can do a special meeting.
I'm available twenty-four hours a day.
I bet your wife would beg the difference.
Yeah, we can make whatever works for your guys' schedule and call a special meeting. I believe what generally it would be the preference to give seventy-two hours to the public, so.
Well, a special meeting is twenty-four.
It's twenty-four on special.
It still is my preference to do three days.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We need to give the public more notice. I think that to give them doing twenty-four is deceiving too, so.
So we can go ahead and now I believe the ordinance, Mr. Henyon, correct me if I'm wrong, that has to be taken care of at a regular meeting and not a special meeting. Yeah, so maybe just getting the language all put together on Friday, after you pass the ordinance and coming back on August 2nd with everything in order might be your best bet, if that's kind of what I'm gauging from your guys' conversation.
Okay, so here we are again. So what is the wishes of council? Do we want, basically it's the sense, it's tabled, we'll have a special meeting.
Do, do we have to table it, Don? Or can we just make a motion to have a special meeting, seventy-two hours?
You should pass the ordinance to the next meeting because it has to be passed at a general session meeting to the next general session meeting, which is August 2nd. And then you work on the resolution at a special meeting, which could be, doesn't need to be a motion or anything. You just need to agree that you're going to pick a day for a special meeting. And then hammer out the language you want in the resolution at that meeting or don't. And if you don't and four members aren't satisfied, then you, at the next, the second reading of the ordinance, there'd be a vote or no vote. And it would pass or fail. It makes sense?
Yes.
So we pass it to the next meeting and then we have a special meeting. We change the wording and then we vote on it at the, on the second.
And one's tied to the other, what you're saying, Attorney Henyon?
You're a little far from your microphone, Paul. What did you say?
One is tied to the other, is that what you said, Attorney Henyon?
The resolution is is a resolution. So an ordinance has got very specific things that has to happen for it to be adopted. A resolution can be changed at any time. It can be changed at this meeting, it can be changed in a special meeting, it can be changed at the next meeting. And both of them need to be adopted in order for the measure to be put on the ballot.
Thank you. Yes, please.
If you don't mind me pointing out the obvious, this doesn't address the pool expense initiative, whatever you want to call it. So how do so how do we address whether or not we can afford it and how do we put it in front of the people? Perhaps we should remove the fire department segment off of this and put it on just with itself so that the community can support it or not. Because that's what it's about, right?
I feel like the whole point was is that what we figured, what we had studied was that the cost of running a pool wasn't going to be a million dollars. And so we, we wanted to share with the police department. Excuse me, wrong chief, other chief, Chief Jerry. We wanted to share with them because they had. If we don't, if we don't share. I'm dead.
I think that you'll be able to make, have those discussions on Friday if you want to have a special meeting and flesh out what the wording would be. Because I think that having talked to you each person individually, Miss Baird, when you discuss kind of the issue financially, maybe you could possibly, or other people have mentioned, people in the public, why can't we just have a tax that goes to Ringy Pool? You know, so there's, I think there's other options that maybe you're alluding to. And so I think that could be fleshed out since it is, we're running into nine o'clock here that maybe if we can go ahead and just introduce a vote to introduce this ordinance and then we will schedule a special meeting for Friday at six thirty PM, if that suits the council, where that discussion over the verbiage can take place.
Right, introduce it and pass it to the next meeting for possible adoption.
Then do we need a vote also to introduce the resolution?
No, no, that was just simply there for informational purposes, for the exact reason that you're discussing it now.
Ordinance, okay. So we have to pass the ordinance, that has to be four fists?
Well, you have to pass it to the next meeting. You don't have to pass the.
Yeah, it's not being adopted, it's just being passed on, you know.
I change my motion to state that we will pass the resolution, right? The ordinance or the resolution?
The ordinance.
It's on to the next meeting for final approval.
For possible adoption.
Possible adoption.
For a second reading and possible adoption.
Second reading, possible adoption, any changes would be made at that time.
Council Milton, I will second the motion.
This, Don, correct me, this needs to be a four-fist?
Well, I, I don't think there's any cases on that. It has to be adopted with a four-fist vote. It, there is, you know, I mean, a conservative argument made, to make that it would need a four-fist vote to be passed to the second. But normally, passing an ordinance on to a second vote is only a, a, a majority of the council.
Right, so we have a motion in a second. Paul Joseph Freeman.
Hi.
Hi. Milton.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett.
No.
This is went down a wrong road for me, so, so I can get some clarifications and get things, some things changed at the next one. I may take further. I just can't go that way. It's more clarification on things. Well, I think that's a real. The majority. All righty, I'm going to request a recess with the, is that okay with the council? Oh, that's okay.
Dewey.
So now we're moving to.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Are we done?
So we, we are done with number 11, but now I'm gonna ask the council, can we move, move just for a brief, jump into 13B, so Juliana can finish what she can do, and she'll make it brief. She'll make it rap, she'll make it fast. Is it okay with the council, Don?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Majority.
I want you to know that this is my 20th anniversary, and I'm not doing anything for it because of this meeting, so.
Oh, happy anniversary.
I tell you, Don, I'm sorry, I think you better hang up and you better go.
All right, is that serious?
No, I think they still want you.
Let me, before we go, counsel, let me ask, let me ask counsel, do we need Don for anything more?
No. I don't think so. Go enjoy your wife.
It's okay then, Cory? Take her out for a drink and rub her feet.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, goodnight, folks, bye.
Bye. Bye.
Okay, you're up now.
All right, thank you for pushing this up, so the city put out a request for proposals for an acoustic engineering firm to do the citywide noise study and noise element update, because it's a very technical element of the general plan update. It has very specific requirements under Government Code Section 65302F, which requires contour maps and noise monitoring that meets several different standards and technical documents for the state. I do not have the equipment nor the training to be able to do that, and so this is a much less costly process. So we went through a request for proposal, from March until April, we received four proposals, two of the four were considered finalists by the selection committee, and we requested some supplemental information. Reta accurately pointed out that we may want to do two sections of noise monitoring once in the summer when school's out, and once in the winter while school is in. So we revised that and sent the supplemental material to the two finalists. Out of the two finalists, the selection committee evaluated those and is recommending that we award the contract to MIG Inc., and so that, the proposal is in your packets as well as the final professional services agreement with exhibits, and so Don has signed off on the PSA for this. Part of the request and the motion is also a supplemental appropriation of $35,000 to be allocated to the line item for the general plan for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. So the last, so since you're in a two-year budgeting cycle, the budget for the general plan was set at $20,000 each year, and that was set prior to my arrival, not understanding that it is much more expensive than just $20,000 a year. So we do have approximately $17,500 rolling over from last year that we did not spend, that is available, but to rectify this fiscal year, we would need a supplemental appropriation of $35,000 to bring that line item up to the $55,000, which is what we have budgeted for this contract. So in addition to the rollover, this contract actually does also go into the next fiscal year, so we don't anticipate needing any other supplemental appropriations for any other general plan items at this time.
Public, actually, at this point in time, is there a member from the public that has questions, concerns, comments? Public, and open it up to the council, is the council, is there questions for the council, or this is a recommendation of the council?
I do, just a couple, so, when was the last time we did this, you say?
20 years ago.
Oh, we're right up there, okay.
Yeah.
And this is, you're doing it now for this, the noise one, for a baseline for the future?
Yes.
And it's included with the housing element?
No, it's included with the noise element, so the general plan requires a noise element, which is actually really unique for any other state, and so this would update that element as part of the comprehensive general plan update. So our housing element is on an accelerated timeline to meet state requirements, we have to have a draft into the state by February of 2023, a final draft, a final, final for housing, so that's gonna be done before all the other elements will be, so this is gonna be part of the larger package that will come back to you in late summer, early fall next year.
Okay, so being, being as we've set a precedent for a time, not so timely manner, we don't have to do it again for another 20?
Correct, you do not, and the, no, no, you don't, yeah, yeah, so, so the other thing too is the citywide noise study could also be utilized to draft a noise ordinance, which you do not have, so we, we have that factored in here as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? And the, the cost of this is $35,000?
So we have currently budgeted $20,000 for general plan items, the contract is $55,000, so we're asking for an additional supplemental 35, so it's a $55,000 total award.
What is the additional, so, because I'm looking on here, it says supplemental appropriation of $35,000?
Yes.
What, but, okay, so that's not the contract, the whole contract, he says 55?
Correct.
And where is the money coming from? I know you said you're gonna, you're gonna move some forward from last year's budget-
That we did not.
Unencumbered?
Yep. So, so this is all general fund revenues, so we're a general fund department, but we did not utilize our budget last year, so I've been working with Reta and Emily, and so that's taken into consideration as we move forward, that our department as a whole came in under budget. So I don't know if Reta wants to speak more to that, or if Reta's available. I know less about the financing side of things.
I think you would roll over that money in your budget line item to account for.
I was gonna say, Reta's.
And so it's, do you know how much was unencumbered from 21, 22?
Yeah, it's about 17.5.
And then we budgeted how much for the year 20?
For, for, for this fiscal year 20, yes.
So 37.5, so we, the difference between 50,000 and 37.5 is what, is, is what we, 55, I'm sorry, and 37.5 is what we have to, what we're, we'd have to appropriate tonight.
So to keep the line item clean, it would be a straight 35, because we haven't applied the rollover yet with the comprehensive update, so our current budget line item for the general plan is $20,000. So it doesn't include the rollover yet.
So then, would the, I, I, I'm gonna, if you're okay, I'm gonna address-
Yeah.
Assistant City Manager Hogan, would then, then at what time would we roll over, I mean, in your, in pa, your past experience in the finance, as a finance director, we would then roll over that 17.5 on paper from last year eventually, back into the general fund? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep.
Doing what, I'm sorry? But it automatically rolled over then?
So it doesn't necessarily automatically roll over, it just means we came in under budget on that line item, and we usually like to keep the items within that line item from year to year, and so for governmental spending, so what we'll do when we get the comprehensive package done, it will show for this last fiscal, fiscal year, we only spent $2,500, so we'll actually amend that previous budget to show that we only spent $2,500.
And I'm just trying to wrap my head around, because again, all I have are budgets from school districts, and we, and we roll, the stuff has to be rolled forward, you know. So would it be, so it would be left there to be rolled into another line item if needed, or, or, or it's just on paper, I understand?
Generally, I believe it falls back, after a year is finished, it falls right back into your general fund coffers.
Thank you, thank you.
And that's only 52.5.
So it's all general fund revenue.
35 and 17.5 is 52.
Yeah, so it's all general fund revenue, so the planning department isn't like a utility fund, we're just general fund revenue, so I'm basically at the mercy of the finance department, so I put in requests, and then they're either granted or they're not, and so.
Thank you, I thank you, Juliana.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not as good with the governmental accounting portion, I just know that I've asked, and I've been told we have the funds, that we'd be able to handle this.
I, I'm just curious as to why this is necessary.
No, you're required every 20 years to update it based off of the Government Code Section 65302F.
$55,000.
Another one, yeah, exactly. One more question? Yes, please. Noise, how, when, not noise, light. When do we do a light study for light pollution?
So there's a couple different ways we can go about doing that, depending on like what level of assessment you would like to do, but we do talk about light pollution and the conservation element of the comprehensive update, so that will be addressed at that time.
Because I've had, to me, light pollution with the city's wireless.
It is pretty decent, it's pretty impressive. It's not like Truck Stop on Iowa impressive, but like, it's pretty, it's pretty large, yeah, I've driven past that night, but yes, that will be in the conservation element.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Wish the council, I will, this is, Councilman McCoy, I will make the motion on 13B that we have moved up before 12, to approve, excuse me, to, are we 13?
Yes.
13B.
Yes.
To, motion to award the contract, citywide study, and noise element update to MIG Inc., approval of supplemental appropriation of $35,000 to be allocated in the fiscal year 2022, 23, and authorize the city manager to sign the final contract to complete the scope of work, and I want to go back and reiterate approval of supplemental appropriation, that's in addition to $20,000, it is already there, so everybody knows that.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Council Milton, I will second the motion. Paul Jones with Freeman.
I'm still with this.
Mr. McQuaid. Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Let's move on. Yeah, move backwards, towards 12. Second, here we go, here we are. Second ordinance, meeting a second ordinance on 872, approving the adoption of police, Wairika Police Department military use, military equipment use, and adding the ordinance to the Wairika Municipal Code, Chapter, Section 9.41, military equipment use, and finding that the ordinance is exempt.
Yeah, thank you, so, yep, you've got my, my header here, so just to reiterate from the last meeting, Assembly Bill 481 requires the city council to approve certain items for use in law enforcement. The term military equipment is broad and includes items that are similar to military equipment. Not all items are actually military issue. The items on the provided list are what is currently in use and will not change the way YPD functions. This bill is meant to provide the city council with information on what is in use, and for them to approve of the continued use of those items. All law enforcement agencies in California are required to present their equipment for approval, most already have, due to the required timelines of the bill. The reason the bill was introduced was to provide more transparency and accountability regarding police equipment. The approval of this ordinance will not change the way YPD functions. Not approving this ordinance could have significant impact on the safety of the citizens and officers. This equipment is vital for law enforcement. So we are asking you, yeah, to, the recommended action, adoption of ordinance 872, military equipment use creating Chapter 9.41, military equipment use by title only, and finding the ordinance exempt from SEQA, and then we have a follow-up item after this that is in concurrence with this item.
Actually open this up to the public, sort of questions, comments from the public? Close it to the public and open it back up to the council, what is questions, comments in the council?
It's not a motion, so I'll do this. I was just gonna ask if this includes that big Duncan hammer.
MRAP does, yes, that's on the first page. Minor resistance, MRAP is protected. Well, can I, may I ask, we, because I mean, I understand what you're saying, I think that the thought behind MRAPs is that, A, they were surplus, and B, they thought that they could be used, and they can be used, especially in our city areas, just like the governor, current governor took Blackhawk attack helicopters and gave them last year, I think, 20, like 26, 7 to Cal Flatt.
Oh, wow.
I probably didn't get one of those.
To retrofit it, I, I think that's the reason, otherwise they scrapped them. I know that it's, it's been used before at the courthouse when there needed to be shielding of officers to get close, so, you know, I mean, it's one thing you don't want to use, but it's like your spare tire, hope you never use it.
Yep.
I'm sorry, thank you for indulging me. So I guess we're, this is the second reading of this, so. Need a motion to continue on this one?
Yeah, this is the recommended action, would be the motion would be adoption.
Oh, I'll make a motion. Adopt ordinance on 872, military equipment use, creating Chapter 9.41, military equipment use by title only, and finding the ordinance is exempt from SEQA.
Debbie Baird, I'll second.
Motion second, Jones with Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Debbie Baird. Another one, Kate, right, we're moving on to the second part of this. Wairika Police Department Military Use, Annual Military Roster Report, naming the military equipment to use for desired, a pursuit of military equipment use policy for purposes of Chapter 9.41 of the Wairika Municipal Code.
Yeah, so this is the roster, the annual resolution that would come to you, itemizing all the items that we just discussed within the ordinance that was passed. So pursuant to California Government Code 7070D6, and in accordance with California Government Code 7072, the Wairika Police Department will submit to the Wairika City Council an annual military equipment report, and will make that report publicly available on its internet website. and will make that report publicly available on its internet website. The report is for authorized military equipment is being adopted by resolution. So the recommended city council action tonight would be a motion to adopt resolution of the city council of the city of Wairika, Annual Military Roster Report Naming the Military Equipment in Use or Desired Pursuant to the Military Equipment Use Policy for Purposes of Chapter nine point four one of the Wai- Wairika Municipal Code.
Mr. Redd, this time I'm going to open it up to the public. So plenty of public comment at this point in time. Public comment this time, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
All right, if no one's going to ask questions, I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt resolution of the city council of the city of Wairika, Annual Military Roster Report Naming the Military Equipment in Use or Desired Pursuant to the Military Equipment Use Policy for Purposes of Chapter nine point four one of the Wairika Municipal Code.
Will call, Joseph Barrett.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
David Barrett.
Aye.
And I do, I take. We'll move on to twelve C. Second reading of ordinance number eight seventy-three, Critical Infrastructure Adding the Wairika Municipal Code, Chapter number nine point four five, Use of Public Rights Right Away, Protection of Schoolchildren, Bus Stops, Critical Infrastructure, Wildfire Risk Areas.
Yeah, as you are well aware, this ordinance package was introduced at the last meeting and an urgency ordinance was adopted at that time and the first reading took place. So the ordinance would ban camping, sitting, sleeping and storing property on any street or sidewalk that blocks the public right of way by obstructing pedestrian or vehicular traffic. The ordinance has location-specific regulations. Camping is banned within ten feet of any bus stop, driveway or fire hydrant. Camping is also banned within two hundred and fifty feet of any youth-serving facility, which means schools, parks, libraries and daycare facilities. Camping is also banned within two hundred and fifty feet of any school route or fifty feet from critical infrastructure, both of which has been identified by Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, which was adopted on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two with urgency ordinance eight seven one. So tonight we are asking the recommended city council action, a motion to adopt ordinance eight seven three, Critical Infrastructure Adding Wai- Wairika Municipal Code, Chapters nine point four five, Use of the Public Rights of Way and Protection of Schoolchildren, Bus Stops, Critical Infrastructure and Wildfire Risk Areas by Title Only and Finding the Ordinance Exempt from SEQA.
Sub to the members of the public, if they have any other questions.
Lorenzo Love, live on Fourth Street. This ordinance puts the cart before the horse. The stated goal of this was to be able to move homeless people to a designated campground or shelter. There is no designated campground or shelter. Where are these people going to go? So you have an ordinance that cannot be enforced. There's no way to enforce this because there's, where are they going to go? So who's going to get blamed for not enforcing this ordinance? Let's man back here. You're passing ordinance that the police cannot enforce. This should be put on hold until you get adequate housing for the homeless, camps, shelters, whatever. They need someplace to go first before you do this. Otherwise, this is meaningless. It's a joke.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Lorenzo. Technically, it can be reinforced. There, the law says that we have to give them the right to rest. It does not specifically say a specific location on that right to rest. As long as we allow them on a public ground, if they want to request that, then we can. We do not have to state that specific area as long as we give them the right to rest and we give them options. And that's what we are doing with this ordinance. He does have the right, the authority to cite these individuals and their, but there is an opt if they can financially not be held responsible. They put the paperwork, so there is no, there is no legal thing that we're illegal thing, I should say, that we are doing right now. It was totally legal. We reviewed this on a number of different levels and it actually is not getting the cart. So thank you for your input because you are correct that we do need a location for them. I am not going to disagree with that whatsoever. And thanks fully and hopefully through the county, we are going to be able to achieve that great goal. So keep our fingers crossed. Thank you. Yes, come up to the mic, please.
Cal Confin, I did the earlier presentation and the comment that you just made of where the people can be. The map that I presented, it looks like there is not a place for them to be, so therefore the law enforcement of it is going to be a more of a challenge. There was one of the people about two weeks ago that was quite irate when I visited with him and he said, I know the rules. And if the city says we can't be here, then he will take it to court. And I don't want that type of thing because that involves more cost. So if this ordinance isn't modified to allow some areas, then I think you're looking for some challenges.
Thank you, Cal. I will agree with Cal. We have, when I've been out with Y P D in Willow, we have two attorneys out there. And they know their rights and they won't threaten. They threaten more than just their rights. They threaten the wives and the daughters of the police that we're with. And they do a lot of, a lot of saber rattling. But when I've been with them, the police and Willow have been very compassionate to them. I will say that. I don't think it's because I'm old, I just think the cop, the police, I'm dying, they're compassionate. And we try to, they, they're just trying to kind of help them understand what their, what the unhoused person's role is. It's not usually, it hasn't been to move them along, because I understand what their role is within the. And that's, and we are working on trying to figure this whole thing out. First, we don't want to let, we, we need to get back to what primarily this, this ordinance is about. It's the, the safety of the all of cit- of the city. Keeping it from having the fire that happened up in Talent, Phoenix area, where we burned down our city. That's the primary goal of this, to keep our city safe. And we are not just kicking people out just for no reason. That's not our goal. I obviously, I've been an advocate for homelessness for many years. It's not our goal. Our, our goal is to keep the citizens safe and that's the big picture. That's what we're looking at. So if this ordinance covers a lot of different ground, long or short is we are trying to keep our citizens safe and we're trying to keep unhoused safe also. Because not only does fire danger affect the house, but it also affects the unhoused individuals too. It will burn them down, it will burn their, their unhoused areas that they consider their housing down too. And it also deals with flood control. It also deals with wildlife habitat. It also deals with a number of different things and it's, the ordinance is there. It's, it's the safety of everybody, not just the safety of a few individuals. It's the safety of everybody. Yes, we are working on it. The county's been working diligently on trying to get some stuff going. Just hoping and praying we can get stuff, but we will get stuff going for this point in time with this. Is, like I said, we are not denying any individuals the right to rest. We are just restricting them to, it's keep the city safe. That's plain and simple what it is. I don't know, chief, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if there's anything that you would like to add, I'm sorry.
Renzo's got a good point. This is Chief Gilman. No, there is a need to send somebody. However, on your point, when there is nowhere to send them, like the mayor was just saying, we're not stopping people from sleeping. They still have the right to sleep. We are not moving them into areas where it's illegal. All we're doing is educating and we're just letting people know you can't be here. If you, we allow them to have fires. If you read the ordinance, you're allowed to have a fire. You can have a cooking fire, a warming fire. So we don't want them in areas that are high fire danger. So a lot of people are just getting confused that it's us going through and just kicking people out. That's not what we're doing. You're allowed to sleep. You have so many hours. You have twenty-four hours in some, three days in another place. All we're saying is you can't be in front of the high school. You can't be in front of a school, you know, like Jackson Street School. It all doesn't count. No, you can't be in front of a bus stop where people can't get on the bus. Places like that, we ask you to leave. Everywhere else, you're allowed to sleep at night. You have to be gone in the morning when the business opens. You're still allowed to have warming fires to cook. So like everyone's been trying to explain, this isn't like a stop or move. This isn't, we're making you homeless. We are just helping them stay out of this area. If you're in grass that's up to your waist in the creek, we ask you to come over here to the pavement side somewhere. That's all we're doing. We're just moving. It's been pretty good. We moved him along. So it's, it's, and it was very far. Yeah, it's been very nice. It's been really successful in the last week. It's more of an education. We've just been talking to people and they've been voluntarily leaving and moving to other spots. So we have a lot of other plans, but just to rest everyone, let everyone be assured, we are not kicking people out. We are not, you know, sending them to places where we're going to get arrested. We haven't issued any citations. We are just educating and asking they're not in the high fires. It's a very soft opening. It's an important ordinance. I a hundred percent support this.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate that. I, I add up my ride-alongs that his officers also are doing safety checks. When somebody is face down in their, outside their tent and they are just dead drunk, they are checking them, talking to them, they're getting them enrolled on their side. So, and I'm not saying that they're all like that, but I've been, three times, I think, I've been with an officer when we were on over. Sometime between, you know, five at night, five in the morning and the officers are, are you okay? Are you, you know? I got some water in my cruiser. I got a lot of water or something. Do you need to sit up or you need to lay on your side? So I mean, that's one thing I, I think your officers also, I think, they're awesome. Much appreciated. If you don't just do it for, those of us that live in a home, you're doing it for a gun house. Absolutely. Yes, Cal.
Comment along with the fire. I didn't have time when I was doing the presentation. But if you look at the current place where most of the people are, the unhoused, that's next to C O S. The fire dangers that you're looking at from Talent Phoenix or the Hornbrook situation, they really are in one of the best places that the city has within the city boundaries because next to them, to the north is Greenhorn Park, which is wet in a lake. Therefore, it's not as likely if there's a fire to go that direction north. Coming south, there aren't many houses or businesses or anything like that. It's kind of open land, so that's not as big a concern, other than I'm over the mountain from them. I'm a little concerned there. And if you look at coming back towards Wairika, towards Black Bear, those are businesses that are there. It's not likely to have fire material. So we've got three sides that look like it's not a big fire issue for them. And the fourth one is up the mountain, which is away from people and it's been a fire up there before in the past. Pretty good sized fire. So this place where they generally are camping or they're parking their vehicles is pretty good fire safe for the city. And somehow the residents need to know that you're looking for a place that will help the city on the fire situation. So, and, and I, I would like to compliment both fire and, and police in that, yes, the people have said, Willow and the others that are up there have been very good to them. That's, that's a very positive, but they need to know that they're okay to be there because we have more people coming into town. When we serve them lunches, we get about a fifteen to twenty percent turnover of new people. They need to know where they can go and I haven't heard that yet from this ordinance.
Cal, we're just saying where they can't go right now. Okay? That's basically, we didn't, we can't go any, any more details on that. We just can't, we, for safety wise of this, of the citizens, we just say they can't be in these areas. And that's kind of what we have to leave it at that.
And I think I showed them my map, the way it's worded, they can't go in probably half the areas they're in already, plus all of the roadway.
Yeah.
So that, that's the challenge I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Yes, chief.
Well, I just wanted to harken back to just a few years ago in the city of Lee. There was a fire, a large fire burned down almost half of the town, about thirty or half of the town. And it was someone building a fire and the wind came along and it blew that fire because they were in a place that was, had a lot of burning material there, trees and bushes and stuff out on Bull Street. And just swept through the town so quickly. That's why I feel that this ordinance is so important because we do not want this to happen in our town.
The homeless, you and I, they don't want it to happen either.
No, they don't want it to happen.
They were upset when that fire got out of control up there and, and said, we were trying to fight it with our tools and stuff. And then one firefighter there, I mean, and they, they agree with you. They, and then we don't want this happening. They were happy, they were actually happy that Cal fired and the rest of the guys. That's the homeless. We're gonna have to, I'll let you speak one more time and then that's, we're gonna have to cut you off. We, we can't have the public coming back and saying.
The, the fire situation is, we had talked about three weeks ago of the city helping out with the fire situation. It can't happen somehow legally. So by the end of the week, I've offered them equipment for them to help clean up their own fire danger. And hopefully that will make the city feel better as well as them.
Thank you, Cal. Thank you. And yes, they, like you said, they, they, they are definitely afraid of the fire too. They're, and they were proactive on that last fire, very proactive. It's very good to know that they are proactive, keeping their housed areas safe too. Anybody, any other things from the audience, public, I should say? Back to the council, council, what is, what is, comments, concerns or anything else?
If I don't have comments, I'll make the motion. Okay. Counselor Metzen, I will make the motion to adopt ordinance eight seventy-three, Critical Infrastructure Adding Wairika Municipal Code, Chapters nine point four five, Use of Public Rights of Way and Protection of Schoolchildren, Bus Stops, Critical Infrastructure and Wildfire Risk Areas by Title Only and Finding the Ordinance Exempt From SEQA.
All set. Thank you. Motion in a second, Jones Smith Freeman. Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
David Barrett. And I do.
So we're on thirteen A.
A, right?
Yeah, normally you would find this item on consent and I'll have the assistant city manager, Reda, kind of clarify. Are we ready to move on this one, Reda? Okay. And so normally it would be on consent, but generally speaking, sometimes we have a conflict with one of our council members. I'm looking at you, Mr. Mayor. In this instance, we anticipated one that I do not believe currently. It did not make it, right? So it's actually not on there. So. Yeah, so the, this is payments disbursements issued from June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two through July ten, twenty twenty-two. Recommended city council action approval ratification of payments issued from June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two through July ten, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I can open it up to the public. Is there any public comments, concern? Okay, closing the public comments part of this and open it back up to the council. Comments of the council or what is your motion? This is, yes, Ms. Councilman McCoy. I will make the motion for approval, ratification.
I will make the motion for approval, ratification of payments issued from June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two through July tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Councilman Middleton, I will second the motion.
We'll call Jones, Smith, Freeman. Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Middleton. Hi.
I do want to, thirteen C, fire assistance agreement of authorizing overtimes and portal to portal pay for Wyrica volunteer fire department personnel.
So if you'll recall and thank you, Assistant City Manager Reda for everything, uh, you always do. And everything you did while I was on vacation, I appreciate you greatly. And so she had worked on the portal to portal, uh, pay issue with Cal OES. You passed a resolution, I believe, at the last meeting. Uh, within the last couple of meetings that was submitted and it was denied. And so Reda went back after conferring with Jerry. Discussed this resolution, what was hypothetically, I guess, needed to be rectified. And has preapproval on the current resolution that you guys currently have. If passed, will be accepted, uh, by this agency. So at the July nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, uh, Wyrica City Council Meeting Resolution twenty-two, twenty-eight was adopted and forwarded to Cal OES for emergency response. Cal OES reviewed the city's resolution and it was rejected due to perceived conditional language for reimbursement. So here's the language, your resolution requesting overtime has been reviewed and was denied due to contingent language tying compensation to responding to state or federal incidents under the CFAA or being reimbursed. I have linked samples below that contain verbiage we recommend using additionally to help with the verbiage. Page A three, sections A point two and A nine of the CFAA talk about contingency. Page A six, section A fifteen point three also mentions that overtime above a battalion chief must not be contingent on the CFAA or executed on the sole basis that there is reimbursement from Cal OES, Cal Fire or the federal fire agencies. So my understanding is the resolution is rectified, but is, um, really for your purposes, no real actual change. It's just as rectified to meet the verbiage needed to pass through Cal OES. So the recommendation tonight is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing overtimes and portal to portal pay for Wyrica volunteer fire department personnel.
Thank you. This up to the public. Comments, concerns?
I have a question. I'm still not clear. Why didn't Cal Fire approve it? What, but I don't understand.
I believe that, uh, they were looking for a contract, languages of a contract. Is that correct? Or, uh, between ourselves and the volunteer fire department? And we currently only have a memorandum of understanding. Is that correct, Reda?
So I hope that our, they were comforted that we have a resolution.
So we don't need a contract between each, between.
Well, there's a, a contract.
Inter-agencies.
Right, between the agencies, but not between the volunteers.
Yeah, they were, they.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question from the council?
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay, this Debbie Barrett, I'll move that, uh, to adopt a resolution authorizing overtimes and portal to portal pay for Wyrica volunteer fire department personnel.
Yeah, okay. Joan, second. We'll call Jones, Smith, Freeman.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
I do.
All right. Thank you very much, Jason Ledbetter, City Manager. This is my staff report here for the city council meeting in July nineteen, twenty-twenty-two. It's been a long month, I think.
Oh, look who's talking. He just got back from vacation.
Yeah, right. I actually thought it would be really refreshing not to have a council meeting for so long, but I, I, it kind of was very weird, to be completely honest with you. So, uh, a lot transpired. Here's a synopsis, six twenty-three and six twenty-four. The outdoor recreation planning workshop with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council, Public and Federal Partners took place here in Wyrica. A planning document will be presented in the future for a possible adoption by the city council. Uh, we are still finalizing that document with follow-up Zoom workshops with all of the federal partners in the EDC. Uh, some of the action items that will come from this document will be to complete a parks master plan. That came up a lot at this, uh, outdoor recreation. And actually it was really, Joan was there, Deb was there. It was really a great workshop, uh, very, oh, and Ms. Ogren. My left hand over here, Ms. Supervisor Ogren was also there. I, uh, it was a long vacation.
Are you awake?
It, but it was really a, it was a planning exercise, if anything. I mean, it was a really well-done planning exercise. It was.
I can't wait for you guys to see the outcome of it because it's all about how to make Wyrica better.
Yes, absolutely. And so master plan for improvements at Greenhorn Park, uh, evaluating zoning changes to improve foot traffic in our commercial and downtown area and improve design standards to maximize the city of Wyrica brand. Uh, on June twenty-seventh, I attended the Southern Oregon City Manager Meeting, which took place at the new Medford Navigation Center. And that's a hundred-person shelter. Uh, so that was very interesting to, uh, meet the Reading City Manager and the County Administrator for Jackson County and a number of other people. And they're currently working on that shelter. This will be the final piece of their puzzle and it will also be run by the same folks that run, um, Rogue, Rogue Retreat. Yes, so a very nice facility. I mean, has showers for dogs and, and everything. It's, it's pretty impressive, so. On June twenty-first, I toured local motels with Supervisor Ogren. Madeline Bryan, Sarah Killard and motel, uh, Madeline Bryan, Sarah Clark from the county. Uh, and motel owners here locally to discuss the opportunity for Project Home Key, which is basically a flipping of a motel, turning it into a shelter. We had a motel owner actually approach the city on that. So we toured two of that person's facilities. Uh, I will continue to vet out the opportunity for the city of Wyrica to work in cooperation with the county of Siskiyou. And my plan is to bring you an application at some point in the future, uh, for this grant opportunity for Project Home Key, which would be a coordinated effort between the city and the county. Uh, the current location. Awesome. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith Freeman. Uh, the current location, uh, would also be really, there's a incredible option at the location we were looking at that is behind the motel, completely fenced and would fit a large number of pallet shelters that Dr. Sarah Killard feels like she has funding for today if we wanted to do that. So huge opportunity and I look forward to bringing that to you guys in the future. This one's a little odd after tonight, but, uh, I'm going to read it anyway, because I, it's been a night. Uh, July fifth, Fire Chief Lemus, Reda and myself, we've started to meet every other week to develop the desired improvements for the fire department. If a tax is passed in November, and then this would be the foundation if that tax were to fail. And obviously tonight, we know that there'll be some changes to this, but we are meeting on a regular basis to discuss what the shortfalls are in the fire department currently and how if money became available, what would be the best use of that money to limit some of the issues that the fire department currently has with medical calls. Uh, the shopping cart ordinance, and forgive me because I got this information before I went on vacation from Lieutenant, uh, Booton. So it's a little bit dated, but, uh, here's the rundown. All businesses have submitted shopping cart permits to the city, which is great news. Uh, all existing stored carts at this point, when I got this information back, uh, were retrieved by businesses. Businesses granted time to bring all carts into regulation under ordinance for serial numbers, address, et cetera. Businesses granted time to equip properties with electronic devices to prevent deter carts from being removed from the property. That's part of, um, that's a line item and getting a permit within a certain amount. So obviously you guys are very familiar with this. Only one business has an issue with, uh, cart retrieval at the moment. I believe that's, uh, the Walton family. That is correct, yeah. Requiring, uh, multiple reminders. Uh, the next phase here is that, uh, admin citations will be issued. So at the, as of six-thirty, when I got this information, no citations had been issued. And I followed up with Lieutenant Booton. Um, that's still the case, but we are now, or they are now currently looking at a citation for that particular business. That does come with a fine, yeah. So, um, and I think that Mr., I think Mr., yeah. And I think based off of the corporation kind of, um, stratification. I think, uh, Mr. Booton was even going to attempt to call the corporate office and get somebody that maybe would have a little more leverage to make something happen. So some damaged carts are still at City Yard and will be, uh, moved to the city metal pile. I believe that actually happened. So currently no fees had been collected, but we're moving forward on a violation and fine on one of the current businesses. Uh, and then you heard a lot about already the critical infrastructure. So just the update, you know, working with Chief Gilman, really itemizing where the areas for fire danger currently are and itemizing the, or determining that behind, you know, on the greenway between Casa Ramos and, um, what I call the Burgess Street residential area. Uh, we decided to start there and with voluntary compliance, educate people that based off the fire danger, we're requesting that they move to another location. And that, to my understanding, has worked out very well. Uh, and so as of today, that area is hypothetically clear of people in fire danger. So that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Awesome. Thank you, Jason. Is there any other staff that wants to make a report at this time?
I think we're good.
That is, oh, we do have to take your.
Thank you. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, uh, Reda for all her work on that, um, contract, contract. But the paperwork to a Cal OES, I mean, you, I have so much faith in her to, and I can't understand what's going on. She sees the forest from the trees, the animals behind the trees. She sees it all. So Reda, thank you very much for that, because I was ready to throw in the towel, but thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Sure. I've, I've heard rumor that there's been approximately three or four call-ins this last week of homeless individuals having a campfire. And then obviously it's not a warming fire in bad locations. Is, is this somewhat accurate?
Yeah, I would say so. Yeah, they're, they're, it's in that neighborhood. We give, if someone sees it on their way to work, I mean, I'm assuming that's what's happening. They're seeing it when they're driving at work. We've had them in different locations. So, yeah, one this morning, one on the hill last night. Yeah, that's correct. And we're dealing with it. People have been cooperative, so for the most part, so it's just, but it's just a matter of time when there's potential, like with the winds today with the red flag warning. Very concerning. So, yeah, it's just, it's an every day. I mean, humidity is dropping every day more and more to where it's like 10% or less, so.
We're down low teens today, but like the single digits like they predicted, so.
So, so some of the things that we've done, you know, with some of the vegetation management, that's all we can do. And then it's up to the individuals to, you know, to improve on that. And I've gotten calls, I've got two calls for potential problem areas in town too, on private, private property that we're gonna have to, you know, make some recommendations or go pay another visit. So anyway, but yeah, that's a good question. And so we've been handling those and they've been on okay so far, but we gotta keep up, keep up, be diligent, so.
Well, thank, thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. I just wanted people to know that there's, uh, that a lot of people don't understand, realize that there's fires being built as, right now. Hundred degree weather that they're being built.
Right. Yeah, it's scary. Yeah, and it's generally in the morning or late in the evening, so.
Generally, that's what we see. Thank, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And to councilman reports. That's what I'm gonna say.
Mine's short and quick.
Paul?
John, I want to go ahead. I want her to go ahead.
Okay.
I just have one thing I like to say. They also had their annual pig roast last Saturday. It was really nice and well-attended. And, uh, Dave and Kathy Tyler cooked the meal and it was wonderful.
Oh, he always does a great job.
It's a fun break, so, so, you know. And then the money that they are, that then goes back into the, for scholarships, for kids, you know.
He always does a good job.
It was great.
And Kathy.
And Kathy, she did the desserts.
And the salad.
She usually does the salad too.
She had a lot, she had a lot, I know.
Okay, just maybe four quick things. The, uh, Collier Board meeting is Tuesday, six to eight, Jefferson State House. Have you ever been to one?
Yes, I've been to three or four.
One. You have? I'm there at all of them.
That's what I had. How'd you miss it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Sure.
Friends of the Fair, we are having our volunteer meeting tomorrow night, five-thirty at the Beer Gardens. And if anybody has any spare time, we could use a few more volunteers in the beer booth and the, and the information booth. No, beer booth as in serving beer. Information booth as in pointing to what's happening where.
But not tomorrow.
We're having a meeting for the volunteers.
Yeah, I'm working at the booth and my husband's working at the, the Friends of the Fair information.
Information booth.
Thank goodness, we need some people there.
Yes. So if anybody feels that urge, just get ahold of me.
Or me.
Or Corey, that's what I'm saying, or Corey. Yes, I'm so sorry.
Honestly, she forgot too.
Yeah, really.
Such an important role to have there. I know.
What did you say, sir?
Instead of chop liver.
Oh. No, he's the president of the Friends of the Fair Board. There you go. Like Joan, I did speak at the Patriots meeting since the last meeting.
Yeah, but you were better received.
Well, it was always interesting to talk to a group of people because they can turn on you like a dime, those people out there in the public, you know?
They grow late from six to eight P M. And I finally just said, I'm done.
Yeah. The Parks and Rec workshop that, uh, we attended, I have to tell you, I only went on the tour and it was phenomenal. Simply because I was around people who had never seen some of these places. And we went to Collier and the museum and Greenhorn Park for a sack lunch, this kind of thing. But to hear the other people on the bus that were from out of the area, they were really impressed. And if you haven't been to either Collier or, uh, the museum in a while, I recommend it highly. I was really impressed with the museum. I saw Collier quite often, but the museum has some wonderful exhibits there. It was great. And I, I, I know I'm talking too much. You should be used to it by now. But, uh, they had a, in the schoolhouse on the outside part of the museum, they have a list of, of the rules for the, uh, teachers there.
Oh, the school marks.
The school marks. They are so cute and you can buy a copy of it. One of, a couple of, can't be married, can't go to an ice cream parlor, can't be out after six unless it's church or school related. All of these cute little rules that are really, um, stunning. We should talk about bringing them back. Oh, I know, yeah, I died.
I don't know what that is.
Paul, they were hilarious. I picked up three pages worth, so it was pretty cool, but that's all I have. Thank you.
When I started teaching eighty-one, in order to work the second job, you had to have the school board to do that. I owned my own business. I had to have approval to own my own business.
Really?
Oh, wow. I had to work at it. Yes.
Wow.
You had to go every year, be approved.
Oh, every year.
Um, yeah, I wanna, I wanna say that, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Mayor Protam Bear did a wonderful job representing Wyrica over.
Thank you. Oh, I love her.
She did a wonderful job there. Long drive, um, as evidenced by the fact that, um,
She did a wonderful job there. Long drive, um, as evidenced by the fact that, um, Panda didn't show, Doug's didn't show, Sam's ass didn't show, the cloud didn't show, so I suggested, I hope they'll take it up, that they just charge a sixty-four dollar charge. You pay for two meals, and if you don't sell something, that's your problem. Because they were gracious hosts at Michael Wondus. They did a really nice job. Michael Wondus.
I hope you talk about the Modoc Indians.
Yes, and the.
I want to share with the Modoc Indians who are in, traditionally Modoc County and Siskiyou County, but their, their, their current reservation is Ottawa, Oklahoma. That's where they work. They're government relegated, too. They're reintroducing bison into Siskiyou County. They have purchased a ranch over there. There are four hundred Modoc that live in Siskiyou County, Modoc County, and Clamath County, and then two hundred that live back in Ottawa. And they're, that was some of the stuff to eat. Anyway, um, and, and they're reintroducing bison, which is gonna be wonderful, and they've invited anybody who wants to go and see their bison farm, to come over and see it. And they're also going to be pulling junipers. Uh, they've started a reclamation project, I think, through the tribe to pull junipers. They're gonna try and pull tens of thousands of junipers. Because junipers, I didn't realize, are the thirstiest tree, and they suck the water out of wells. And so they are going, they're, they're gonna get rid of it. But Debbie did a great job of representing them. One of the things that we learned is that Doris has got a splash pad, and it's gonna be opening real soon.
Yes.
A splash pad, you know? Doris has got her own splash pad. I think Doris's population's gotta be about.
They're more advanced than we are.
Two hundred fifty or three, two hundred fifty or three. I don't know. They've got a splash pad. Pretty sad, yeah.
Sad, sad. They've got, what, twelve hundred people there?
Oh, no, that's not that. I don't think, I think it's three hundred.
Oh, a thousand.
Um, I did wanna share what, uh, let's see, let me, let me, uh, I did wanna share that, uh, the car wash seems to be moving along. I communicated with, uh, John Richter, and it seems to be moving along. Also, the RBC seems to be moving as well. Somebody was saying August for an opening, but I don't know. I know they're hiring, so, well, you know they're hiring, but your cousin has been hired. She's a general manager. Let's see. The only other thing I was going to say, probably share, was, um, it seems that we just have tons and tons of shopping carts everywhere in the street, on the sidewalk. I saw one in front, first in front of Marcos Ramosoff, since then, two days later, in front of Jeff Stroud, and two days later, down in front of where the chef's, that's where it used to be, and it was full shelter. Beautiful shelter. So, um, one of the things that, when, and, and, and I, I, I'm gonna expend weight right now. I know people think, well, I'm blowing smoke, you know, with the butter, or whatever, excuse my French. But, you know, you get out there with them, and I appreciate that. And when I, and when I'm out there, whether it's with, alone or with them, we'll say it's with you. You're asking questions, you're getting stuff for them. One of the things these people said to us, these unhoused people, we don't want the shopping carts up here. We don't like them up here. They don't. They don't like, they go, and it's just a few of them, and take them. And I thought, you know what? I mean, you know, there's a lot of stuff that you have to tell us. So, I appreciated that. I'm glad to see that we have a dumpster up there. I think that we're moving in the right direction. I, I, I think we may have taken some missteps, we may have stumbled, but we're not gonna, we're gonna keep moving forward. So, thank you. That's good.
Oh, and I'm, I'm sorry to, to do this, but I just wanted to let everybody know that the, we did receive the DTSC grant to do the soil cleanup on Foothill.
Oh, that's what.
And so, we'll, we will be bringing that. Juliana worked on that, and so we'll be bringing that to you guys on August second.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Same old way, that's crucial.
I'll make it really brief, because it's getting late. Um, so, yeah, just touching on what Debbie said, we are short on some volunteers this year. Um, we have about sixteen shifts that we need at the Beer Garden, and so we help people pour in beer, or else I'm gonna be there from ten A.M. to midnight for the whole fair, looks like, maybe. So, be a little tired. Yeah. And, um, let's see. I don't think I have anything else to report. Uh, just one thing I wanted to bring up, or maybe make a note of it, is I did get two complaints by residents at the Oregon and Lennox Street intersection with that bridge, with the weeds being about that tall near the street. So, if they're gonna catch, they're gonna catch you right to those, up that creek, or the windows going up, and go into, if we can get those weeds. They might even take care of it by now. I don't know. This was a few, about a week ago. I got pictures of it.
No, I don't, I think we have that. We have Gold Street, that waterway there. And so, these all have to do with, um, and I didn't mention this, but we are currently back in conversation with CDFW on the sixteen-hundred permit, because we actually can't go in there, and, um.
It's not on. It's, it's on the street.
It is on the street? Okay.
It's on the street, or up above, right there on the corner.
And can you just tell me?
Into the creek area.
Yeah, what was the, uh, what was the cross?
It's by the bridge at the, uh, Oregon and Lennox.
Kitty corner to that little park?
No, no.
Am I off the block?
Yeah, off. By Craig Mommer, the Harris House.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That bridge.
Oh, that bridge.
That bridge.
That's the place where the lady said that the smoke was coming out of.
Yes, and so, someone's, so, uh, someone sent me a picture of that, so if we can just, and I just want that we need to, you know, as a city, I know it's tough with our staff, because we have to lead by example. If we're asking our residents to keep their weeds down, we should be doing the same for fire. It's like, it looks pretty embarrassing when we're issuing note, nasty notices, people saying, mow your we, you know, mow your high grass down, keep your property clean, you know, fire, and then we have weeds that are four feet tall on our property. We need to be a little more responsible. So.
That's kinda hard to criticize other people.
Yes, it's like, and I got that from somebody. It's like, oh, you're sending me this letter? Look, this is your city lot. So, yeah, so, um, so busy season, it's been busy summer. Sorry, I missed the, I was ill. I was planning on coming to the tour. That, and I became ill, so I was down a few days, and, uh, you held up.
Yes.
And I was bummed I missed that.
She deserted me, and then that night was.
I had the worst, one of the worst migraines I've had in a while, so, yeah, so I was down a few days, a couple days. Um, other than that, um, it's like any of that, it started to pick back up again. Real estate market slowed a little bit because of interest rates, but July is always kind of slow, but we picked back up again. So, that's good.
I, I have a suggestion. I think that people should come to the Alex hamburger booth, get a hamburger, and then go directly over to Friends of the Fair.
And grab a cold beer. I probably gained, I probably seriously gained by, like, I don't need to gain any more weight, it's obvious here, but I probably gained seven pounds during the fair, because I've said. Going to everything, because I'm there for so long.
Fish tacos.
And Debbie and I might partake in skipping, go get a cone or two.
Oh, sure. I'm way under the bus.
I say no, Deb, I really don't need it, and she twists my arm. But, I know, exactly. But I'll, I'll wrap, I'll wrap it up, because it's, it's getting late.
Yeah.
And I'm delirious.
I know.
He's a wicked ice cream.
Yeah. Oh, kid.
Yeah, more than that.
Um, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I just want, like I said, thank both the chiefs, especially for their involvement in this critical infrastructure. It's gonna be, it's gonna be challenging the, the months to come, but I think working, like I said, with the county, I think we got some good partnership going with the county that we can help, uh, keep Waireka safe and keep, uh, the individuals that need help and want help, get that the help that they need. So, this is what the ultimate goal is, to help individuals that need help and want help. So, thank you for that. Uh, I would like to ask the council if they, we, I've had a lot of calls, uh, I don't know, on everybody else. Yeah, on everything. There's lots of calls, no. I have a lot of calls on the needle exchange program.
Yep. That's a county program. Don't people realize that?
I know.
They wanna blame the city. It's a county and state program.
Let me finish, please. Um, what the concern is of this is that it's being done on Waireka city property. And we do have control of that. And they have banned it in, I know other cities, and I know it's something that, that the council wishes. I would like to bring it back and have a discussion on that, not necessarily making decisions on that. I think we should have a discussion. Yes, correct. No, I don't wanna make it, no, I'm not, no decision-making. I just want it brought for discussion. And this is not, obviously, right now, because we obviously need to talk to the county about this.
Yeah.
Remember when they came to us and appeared to us.
This has been, this has been a couple of years. Okay, so it's been a while.
We, we have talked since I've started here in January, um, to the county and the individual that runs that program, and, uh, if you would like, I could have them come present the program and answer questions, or we can go a different direction. It's up to you.
Yeah, that'd be something that we, because I think the, the public needs to weigh in on their input on that, too. But I think it needs to be, uh, presented to the public. It's, not everybody feels the same.
Even the homeless person that was here tonight was complaining about all the needles on the street.
Well, it's, it's not, this, this, the.
I'm not sure, but I'll, I'll, I'm sorry.
Hasn't been entirely safe for our city workers either. They have to pick up trash. They're picking up trash, and there's needles involved, but there's the danger of them getting contaminated, so.
That's a great point, and that's kind of part of the issue of having any type of volunteer show up somewhere to, to clean up garbage, kind of like the old days. It's too dangerous on city-owned property.
So, um, I'm not gonna go any more detail, but I, we could bring that back. Second meeting in August or something, not the first one. And it's gonna be discussion-only, no, no action.
Okay.
Correct. Because I know one of the things, and I, I don't, were you there when they brought that up? I can't remember. It's kind of, kind of a blur tonight. The one of the homeless individuals asked that we have one of those, um, containers. Was it the last guy we talked to, the firefighter? No, the last guy with the dog, or the guy, he was a guy with a firecracker in the south, yeah. Yeah, he actually wanted to see one, uh, to where they could just dump them in there, to where they keep them separate from the trash. And not actually do it in exchange, but at least dump it in the safe place where they would not get put in the trash, so. So, there's, there's some discussion that needs to be presented.
But I thought that they were, they were in front of Lower Greenhorn, and we told the.
Correct. That is, that location was.
They couldn't do that anymore, so they moved over to.
Oberlin.
Over to the entrance of the Greenway. And then we told them they couldn't do that, and then they.
No, we did not tell them they could do that.
No, I don't think we ever moved them, yeah.
Oh, we didn't?
We only moved them from Greenhorn only. Yes, that's the whole, that's the whole controversy.
Right across from me and go help them.
Yeah, right, right.
It is same property. That's the problem.
They could ask them to talk to them.
They, they, we told them, yeah, we told them we couldn't do it. They couldn't do it at Greenhorn, Lower Greenhorn. We didn't say technically on that property, so. That's what, that's why we need to have this discussion, because there's some areas that we that need to be addressed. It's not safe for the general public.
Right.
When you find them, I literally found it in front of my house.
Oh.
Needles, so, that gets to be a point. The whole, whole idea of the needle exchange is an exchange.
Well, and the parents are complaining that there's needles
In the park.
in the park, on the playground equipment, and they're worried about their children's safety.
Absolutely.
Children and grandchildren.
Like I said, our other concern is our city workers that have to pick up trash, that have been picking up trash, and they have risk of, you know, them getting hurt or infected, so. Uh, anyways, that's all. Let's, I'll leave it.
I wanted to add.
Yes.
Some that is important to Waireka. Um, we're in danger of losing the RN, the LBN RN program, the new president.
Yes, COS.
COS is working diligently to get people to man it. This year, I don't, didn't she say it wasn't gonna happen this first semester?
Oh, wow.
In the spring, she's got an LBN instructor that she's waiting to hear back from. It's promising.
I think that the LBNs are, it's gonna stay, but if the RN doesn't come back in two years, we lose it. It's gone too good. We can never get it back. And they have the Fire Academy. They're working on getting two people in the Fire Academy, because we're gonna lose, weed's gonna lose it if they don't do it. And they got a thirty-five or thirty-two million dollar grant. They're building a hundred new rooms. They're really new dorms.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's, that's.
And, uh, Mr. Clever, I think I usually talk to, and so, I am working with Tanya Daus, is organizing a meeting, because there's opportunity for our location with a number of things you just mentioned. Um, so there's something in the works, hopefully, we'll be bringing to you guys.
Oh, good.
This student, this new president, she's from, she worked already.
Yeah.
She's a firecracker. She's not, I, she's, she's gonna be, she's gonna, yeah, she's gonna push this college forward and try and build it.
I hope she stays a while.
She's a sharp lady.
I hope she stays.
They've been transitional lately. Oh, yeah, thank.
Yeah, a little. Okay. We need a journey.
Yeah. My wife, my wife and I.
Cocktails and creams, buddy.